Our minutes of the previous week. Were read and approved, the board approved the change of status for Deb Burks, full-time, Public Health Registered Nurse, and Hickams are in, in the Public Health Department. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the four 10-hour workday schedule from March 12th, 2023 to September 14th, 2023, for Secondary Road Department. Motion passed unanimously, and motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the change request number one for the courthouse first-floor restroom renovation, option one, at no additional cost, and motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the courthouse sidewalk repair to 10-point construction in September, motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden, to approve the annex elevator repair proposal to Schumacher Elevator Company, motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made by the board about the city center remodel, no action was taken at this time. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the land management agreement, motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart, to approve the tax abatement for parcel 0626-130004, City of Charter Oak, motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Hayden, to approve the following resolution, Crawford County Resolution 23, 2023-17, the Board of Supervisors, Crawford County Board of Supervisors hereby passes the resolution authorizing the county attorney, Colin Johnson, or his designee, to participate and otherwise resolve the new nationwide opioid settlements with retail pharmacies, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allergan, Allergan, to include any and all signing authority. Voting I, Hayden, Rosberg, Schultz, Dozart, and Mulbauer, motion passed unanimously during citizen input. And Janine Cook, Observer and Manila Times, of the Observer and Manila Times, wanted to talk about Senate File 546, taking public notices out of the newspapers. The board held budget work sessions with Conservation, the Sheriff, and Public Health Departments. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at 12:40 PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday, 4th of PM, preceding the next meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mother. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes of the last meeting? During them? And scroll in there. Okay, on to the supervisors before, we're gonna be pressed a little bit today, if everybody could abbreviate a little bit, because we've got something before Paul shows up, so.
I'll start and be brief for us. I had our mental health court meeting in Goldstein, and so I asked for the numbers of Crawford County people that had used the Sulin mental health, just because I'm always curious, you know? So Dawn had sent it to the gal that runs it, and she said, "I've been asked by Jean Hayden, or the number person served in our crisis services for Crawford County, seems irrelevant to me since we're a region," but I told her I'd reach out, "from July to February is sufficient." Okay, so then I got, from Crawford County, we had zero individuals during this time. All right, I thought I'd start with that, so we get on the right mood for how mental health went. Okay? Um, I'll start with the most important thing, which is the Senate File 471, in which only 49% of the board can be supervisors. So there was a big discussion about how big that board should be, how many people should be on it, and it looks like they're going to only have five supervisors, and it would only be the supervisors that have an employee of record, which Crawford County is not one of them. So it would be Buna Vista, Cherokee, Humboldt, and Woodbury. So we would not have a vote at the table any longer. So then, the rest of the board, it's very specific in this legislation that it would need to be, you know, somebody who has, somebody in the program, and some providers, and we found that odd, that the people who are getting the money would be part of the voting sector, and the people that are working on the budgets don't really have as much vote. So it's yet to be seen. Now, I thought Nate Deasy would be a good representative for the judicial system in the region, so I'm going to press really hard, at least one of those individuals is somebody from Crawford County. I've talked to a couple of other counties to make sure that we can, can work that, because they were giving out the names, and they're kind of just taking people that are already on it. I think if we're gonna upset the apple cart, we might as well upset it all the way, and get all new people, so each county at least has one person that can bring back a report. They said we can, we can still come, but we just won't give a vote. So that was a highlight there, a real highlight.
I'm not very fond of that idea at all.
Well, here's the whole, whole thing.
We're not paying, mind you, but we're still trying to represent our folks.
So then the other conversation was in Sioux City, they have bought the old Pier One building for therapy, and it's a really great program, do not get me wrong, but once again, in her letter, it was 89% of the patients they see are from Woodbury County. And I keep being reminded that Cecil had the attitude of not the region, all about Crawford County, and so I guess, I didn't even know that, but that's what I worry about when I'm at those meetings, is how is Crawford County being served, you know? So Dawn explained to me that some of these numbers for Crawford County are low, because we don't really want to transport them. If they're getting the call on an emergency, they're either put into our jail or into our hospital, they don't want to transport them to different places, so that's the reason that they feel our numbers are down. So I don't know how to really fix that.
Which shows that our region isn't working for us in Crawford County.
Well, she would more say that, you know, likely that our sheriff should be the one that's saying, "We need to get this person to this place or that place," and, and it's all just a finger point, I'm sure. If, and I'd like, if standing was here, you could say how that really works, because I don't know, but that's her opinion of it. So we're not seeing really anybody there. So then we had a request for $21,570 from the region for Camp, Camp Autumn, which we do that all the time. And once again, I wondered, you know, how many kids from Crawford County are fortunate enough to be on this list of kids that get to go to Camp Autumn, that number zero. There's 20 kids that are referrals from, usually their therapist, or from, you know, some school that this child could really benefit. And I do find it hard to believe that there is no one in Crawford County that would benefit from this Camp Autumn, which is part of what our region helps to finance. So I did get the gentleman's card, and I'm going to, you know, call the school and see, you know, even if we just send one child from Crawford County, it's, it's a week-long therapy session, and they say it's just fabulous, but once again, no one from Crawford. And I understand where a region, I understand it's one for all and all for one, but I'd like somebody from Crawford County to be hands-on benefiting from these programs, and that's pretty much the whole three-hour meeting that we had.
You know, Jean, if there's been anyone from Crawford County that's been like, I'm assuming you have to be referred there by a doctor?
You do, you do.
So has a doctor ever referred someone, and then they were declining?
Not that I know of, nope. It, it would be like the school therapist, or somebody that, that maybe is using Plains area, you know, because there's a lot of children that, that have, you know, issues that aren't huge, but that go down to Plains area, I think they're very full with that. And then we have, I think, two school therapists in the, that switch between our county schools, that's what I understand. But they would have to, you know, say, "I think that it would be great," and then get ahold of this guy, and then they would work out the transportation and the time to go. So I, I want to follow up on that to find out exactly why Crawford can't give, just, I know there's one child from Crawford County that would.
Well, the interesting is, with the school therapist, even though that camp is, is available.
I agree, I agree, and that's why.
I don't know.
He came up to me afterwards and kind of, you know, felt bad that, you know, that hasn't been the, the chance. Calhoun has, has a couple, and then the guy, the supervisor from Calhoun, said that the reason that they have a lot is their therapist refers them, you know, and so he was kind of not apologizing, but just saying, you know, "We, we've always used the program," and so it's just a follow-up. So then we had an update from all of the providers of that, what, what they do as far as, and what I found interesting is, when you get booked into jail, they do a screening, did you guys know that? And if one question is yes, then they would call our Kaelin, or your provider, I, did anybody, you guys know that? If one question is yes, they have you evaluated for mental health. So if you ever get booked in, don't answer yes to any of the questions.
It's good to know.
Unless you need to, or.
Yeah. And what they're, what they're trying to do, then when they come in, their services are voluntary, and they're trying to develop trust, and they track the arrests and the data and the risk factors, and, and they really did praise our stepping stones, that was the other part of, that is a program that really does work. So since I'm gonna be brief, that's my part. One other thing I'm gonna do during my time is, I had a call from a current firefighter who wondered, you know, where we were at with our firefighter incentive, and so I said, "Well," he was giving me all these numbers, and I was driving, so I said, "Just write down what you think would be a good idea, and give it to me." So he gave me a copy for everybody, kind of some of his thoughts, because he hates to see that, you know, just die, you know, like a lead balloon, "It's a great idea." He feels like there's, you know, a way that we could work out some kind of an incentive, some kind of a benefit for retirees and all that, so I thought I'd share that with you, to kind of keep that conversation open, that we don't just forget about that great idea, we had to appreciate our volunteers. I, basically, all that.
Take one and pass it on.
Oh. You always had a fistful of papers, I just didn't go.
That's not your fault. So that's my shortened version of my mental health move, but I, I probably will continue to go, even though I don't have a vote anymore. Well, it's not set in stone, we have until July, but I'm pretty sure, but I will continue to ask.
It just seems like, you know, the region is supposed to be set up to pull our resources to help all of us.
That's right.
Whereas it isn't, we're being left in the dark, I don't know, the outreach isn't being done, or why we're not seeing our kids being notified, but now we have no say.
No say.
No, no voice.
No representation for a region that isn't serving us.
I just thought I'd start with that, and you guys could decide from there what you think's going on, but.
Based on the new, the new arrangement, what is the percentage of supervisors in your board? What will it be if it's only the member counties, the, that employee of record counties?
Well, so they suggested the board be 12, and I'm like, "It can't be 12, it has to be 11 or 13, you can't have a 12." So then they were gonna have 13, and it would be five.
So that's not even.
So less than 49%.
Yeah, way less.
Yeah. And then I kind of jotted down the names and what they did.
What, what is there, I mean, and having people that receive the money, vote on where the money goes.
That seems a little counterintuitive.
Well, beyond collective interest, sorry.
Yeah, huge.
It's, I think it's one of those that they have to pass it, and then they're gonna read it. I don't know, I never have good news, I'm sorry.
No, Jean, it ain't your fault, I appreciate, we appreciate the detail that you do bring up.
So I just, I'm just sharing what I gathered, and it was a three-hour meeting, so.
But it seems like if you take authority away from locals, it'll be, we're, we're on the same path as workforce development.
Yes, we are.
Exactly.
Why, why, because, why, why have a member on the board if we have no say, no vote, it?
And no people using the.
And it's not serving our, our communities.
It's just something we've been fighting.
It seems like that apple cart needs to be upset, too, redesigned.
So I don't know, is there a way a person can, you know, kind of just not be a part of the region, and just do a pay-by-patient, patient?
Probably stay a while, though.
Well, I mean, we don't pay, in a sense, it comes out of state treasury now.
But at the end of the day, those are Crawford County tax dollars going into that pool, going into this pool, to be divided out among.
It is.
And so, yeah, it's, it's not exactly like when we used to send $600,000 from Crawford County.
To rolling out.
But I, I believe the services are probably very similar, even when that was actual $600,000 of Crawford County money, and that is irrelevant how many people from Crawford are going.
But what's your opinions, like, the state doesn't want us to have local voice on that board?
I don't think the state really understands, I, 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 well, I'm sure that what their thought is, is that it's state money, and so the state, you know, the, the counties don't need that much control, because that money's coming from the state.
Get rid of the board.
That's coming, probably, you know, it's a baby step.
We were there once, and it all, it didn't work, that's when they handed it back to the locals.
Gets us back quicker to the fix.
And the backstory on that a little bit is, you know, some of the regions weren't facilitating the programs properly, not really serving the people at all, and not doing what they're supposed to, so it's, it's punishment, you know, group punishment, so we all are being punished for the core services that weren't being provided properly, so now the state will say how that's gonna be provided, and so they get to pick the people that are gonna be on the boards. And that's right there in front of you, how they're doing that. So it is what it is.
Lovely. Now, to go back to about six, seven years ago, and we started talking about, that's how we stated the wheels were finally gonna fall off the wagon eventually, while I was proud of it.
Well, I just go back to 18, I remember Cecil having this, I mean, sitting here going on and on about that, and when I was sitting over there.
They reminded me that I remind them of Cecil.
I just, you know, Cecil, one of Cecil's big complaints, oh, I remember when they were bringing Woodbury in.
Yep.
Was that that'd be where all the money'd end up focusing, as far as Woodbury.
Cecil had a crystal ball. He saw.
I just.
Call him and tell him how right he was. Yeah, so that's kind of what's coming down the pipe, but, you know, that decision was not made, I don't want anybody to think that that was a vote, we have until July, and so I'm gonna really, really push for making sure that, that every county is represented with a person with a vote.
You know, and I'd like to bring up, like, when you brought up the sheriff's supposed to be recognized, remember when we went to that thing for them guys from San Antonio, how their, how their whole policing area improved when they really started focusing on mental health?
Yep.
And that came from the police department.
Absolutely.
So, that's a great point.
There are times when a person who is having an issue, if you just get on their level and ask them what's going on, rather than threatening to tase them.
Yeah.
You know, there's a whole different reaction, because that person can't cope, and so they need somebody that can help talk them off the bridge, so speak, and sometimes it's just easier to haul them in, you know, sedate them, or, and we could have a conversation with our sheriff, just to see if there's a way that we could use some of these facilities that are available, that are, are core services, because I, I don't like to just have the one side of the story.
I think it's a pretty weak excuse, or lame excuse, that transportation is why our community isn't being served.
I think it needs a follow-up. I think that, anything, it's just, it starts a conversation, because that's the only way things can change, is to get the conversations going, and, you know, get both sides of what's going on, and, because the other solution is that we just don't have any taxpayers in Crawford County that require mental health assistance, because, you know?
And we know better.
And I know better than that.
Exactly.
I know better than that.
And we don't know to what extent the sheriff's office is using those facilities, right?
That's correct, that's correct, or, I don't, I don't, I don't know the whole picture, it's just becoming very weird to me, because I want these numbers, you know, we never used to get these numbers, we would just get 18% of our people were this, and then we find out that it was 18% of 10 people, but none of them were for Crawford County.
I'd like to know how much outreach is being done by Dawn, from up here, down to all the member counties, to say to our sheriff's department, or, hey, these services are available, if you can get them there. I don't think any of that is being done.
I wouldn't.
And except unless you're in her loop, and being a rural company, I feel like we're in the dark out here, and they service who they want to, or they at least are in contact, but I, I don't think it's across the whole region.
I thought that was pretty obvious.
Right, so it's.
It's irrelevant, how many, it's irrelevant.
But then to turn around and say, "Well, you're not getting transported to us." You're the director of our region, reach out to the departments.
Your federal, come down and pick them up?
Exactly.
I just feel like unless you get the conversation out on the table, it just stays under the table, so that's why I bring it forward, so we can see what we can, if we can fix it, and if we don't know it's broken, how can we fix it, so?
Well, please don't give up on trying to fix it.
Do my best.
Okay, we appreciate it. You're best to the least, though.
So that's my shortened version.
Okay, well, thank you, Mulbauer. I'm glad we didn't get the longer.
Yeah, I'll start with, I filled in for Louise at the Reed House, they did a Veterans Bingo fundraiser, really good turnout, lot of fun. Bet they had 70, 80 people there, raised $341, it was a nice, nice evening, Louise had a band charter up that night, so I went up with the kids and my Uncle Gary, and played bingo, and raised some money. And they, it was just a nice honor, Kendall there honored all the veterans that were there, and all the veteran residents of the Reed House, great facility that we, we have here, right here in our community, and it's nice to see them doing.
She kind of did a good job.
Right, she does, and then just to do something like this, that, you know, good for the residents, good for the community, it's fun to be a part of, so I was glad to go there. I talked to you a little bit, Ty, about grant writing, the gentleman that works for USDA, and there's a lot of USDA housing funds and grant funds available, and he had mentioned to me that, that they, they're seeing community cities hire a grant writer, specific grant writer, but they pay them, instead of having to pay 60, 70, 80,000, or whatever it would be to bring in somebody specialized like that, a lot of them are shifting where they're paying them a base salary of, let's say, 40,000, but then they're saying, for admin fee, we'll give you a percentage of every grant you get, whether it's a .05, or whatever it is, but then they incentivize them to keep right the heck out of grants. And they've been seeing a lot of positive with, with having that type of position in a community, and something to just think about, maybe it could be coupled with CDC, and we talked about that a little bit, but just trying to, you know, if, if there's funding available to improve our communities, it's kind of like what we talk about with, with our small town, it's how much do they want to go after, how much they want to be involved, how, you know, in the communities that are, seem to be more successful and thriving.
Well, and even if you have somebody like that on staff, I mean, they can help, like, you know, like, we recently had the meet, the, like, the, for building lockers and stuff, I mean, there's guys out there that would really like to do that, but aren't necessarily good at writing their stuff, get that grant, these people could still get paid a percentage of that, and help write those things, you know, I mean, there'd be just, it, it could be benefiting the county in a lot of different ways, you know? So, yeah, that's actually something to really think about.
That's pretty much what I had for the next question.
Okay.
Sweet, sweet. Mr. Dozart?
Meeting last Tuesday night for the Western Iowa Community Action. Just briefly, they are waiting for the new org chart to come from the Department of Health and Human Services. All of their headstarts and early headstarts had open houses last week, I did not make it to, to Dennyson's, all of them are full, and I will be serving on their finance committee for 2023, and just, Jean sent, gave us, passed around this.
Idea?
Idea, correct, and I'll just let you know that I did put a phone call into two separate firefighters, one Dow City, one Manila, and just asked them to ask amongst their members what they think a good incentive would be, and they said they would do that and get back to me, and they have not done that yet, but I think they're waiting for their meeting, however often they meet, but they both said that they would, wanted to have some input on it, so I think to Jean's point is, it's not something certainly that we have forgotten about, and it's something that we want to do, I think we just want to make sure that it's.
Yeah.
That it's a good incentive, and that's why I wanted to get their input, why not ask the people that we're trying to incentivize, ask them for their input, so.
I did speak to one from Manila, you know, they, they do see the injustice to, you know, this, like, because their taxes aren't as high as the ones that live in, I'll just use Dennis, and you work inside by side and have as many years, and you don't get as much, that, that just doesn't ring true to them, that, you know, your taxes are only $1,200 a year, which this guy that sent me from Kyra, you know, and the guys that live in Dennis and living, you know, there's our $5,000, so you get $500, and he's been on just as long, you know, so that's one part that we would have to change, for sure, you know, so that it's a dollar amount, not a percentage of your taxes, and they don't understand why it has to be a tax write, either, they just don't understand that, so.
Right, and I know, I think that's gonna be, have to be part of our discussion, because I mean, I see that we pay our township people, we pay them money.
Trustees, yeah.
The trustees, right, for the townships?
Yeah, just for meeting it.
So.
Thanks, 25 bucks a year.
One of the counties pays per fire you go to.
In the discussion.
You know, they pay, every time you go to a fire, you, you get paid. It's a thought, and it's not a lot, but it's just appreciation, a little, little something for showing up, you know? Keep that conversation going, I guess.
Okay. That's it.
That's all you have, sir? Mr. Schultz?
I'd say Greg's here.
Dwayne should be coming, too.
Oh, okay.
I hope. Yeah, that's why I keep looking up, I'm about 35, at 30 after I was, you know?
I just wanted to bring up, I just, Conservation Special Board meeting Thursday night, we got the salaries thing figured out.
Good job.
And then Chris elaborated a little bit on the water samples came back, and haven't changed in 30 years, underneath, well, surprised. Didn't get better.
Didn't get worse, either, did it?
No.
No.
That's what it is.
Oh, had a landfill meeting also Thursday night, we just had to vote on accepting and paying a couple bills that, for post-closure fees for our transfer station, no, we weren't fully funded, so we had to take 1,500 and some dollars to fund that account, and then just had some quick conversation in regards to the county farm, and what, what we want to do with that, and had a, said there, we could maybe make a triple tourism, conservation, education out of it, so, we're gathering, he's, that gentleman's gathering more information on that, and that sounded pretty, I thought maybe, something that would be fit, really nice, that's it.
That's all you have? Well, we'll just hold mine off, man, we got 10:35 coming up, and we want to get this here, fit in this week, and put it on the agenda. ISAR is, wanted us to present a word to three of our county members. Kyle, if you'd stand.
I guess we're starting a few.
Is that old?
Yeah. He's not as old as the other two. Well, Kyle has, has 20 years of service, and speaking on behalf of ISAC and, and county employees, we hereby express our sincere appreciation to Kyle Schultz for his dedicated service to Crawford County Government. Thank you, Kyle. And then the only guy that's not the oldest, Dwayne. Okay, once again, 25 years of dedicated service, we hereby express our sincere appreciation to Dwayne Zink for his dedicated service to Crawford County. We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Dwayne Zink for his dedicated service to Crawford County Government. No. Mr. Miller, come up please. And this one is for thirty years of service. We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Greg Miller for dedicated service to Crawford County Government. Certificate? And then grab together and come forward a little bit. Alright, big smile. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your service. Look, Kyle, did you have anything else you'd like to contribute? Okay, well, I'll sneak mine in a little bit here. Time to really go over this in detail, so I'll hit a couple of high points. I had Central Iowa Juvenile Detention last Friday. And uh, a couple of the big things that they were talking about uh, was they uh, they're, they're working on getting re-quotes for their, their liability insurances. Uh, they have thirty million dollars in coverage or something to that effect. Uh, but that's work comp, you know, what regular liability, cyber insurance and then vehicles and stuff they got. So they're waiting for quotes on that. It's hard to get providers for as much as they got going on, cause they got so many darn things going on with their different programs. But uh, they do have at least one for sure, but they're wanting to get multiple quotes out. The new pod is almost done. It's been almost done for a while, but and obviously their contractors are having the same kind of troubles everybody else is, getting parts or materials, they should say. But then also labor staff and then weather issues. But supposedly by this next month, now that, that pod will actually be able to uh, isolate kids that are a little bit more traumatic or, you know, got more issues to deal with. They, they're, they're really having a lot of trouble and they even have trouble keeping staff over this. I suspect it isn't much different up at the US Center. But they, they had one guy that came on, he was on for three days and a kid threw a cup of urine at him. And he said, I didn't sign up for this stuff, you know? I mean, it's just, there's things like that that they have to deal with inside these detention centers for these juveniles and and uh, I'm trying to think of what the, that DRI, um, uh, Disability Rights of Iowa. Now they get in, they've got involved in the detention centers. And it's like when a kid misbehaves and attacks another kid or, or one of the faculty. And they can only block them in their room or, you know, put them in the room to think about what they're doing for an hour. They basically put somebody in a hospital and they get an hour's worth of, so I mean, there's just, they're, they're, they're fighting the system. So I mean, it's, it's a lot of and the, that, we, you know, we talked about this several times, you know, like the, the state schools. It was actually this DRI and they're fresh, just pressuring, they're constantly working the state and making them change things and do stuff to where the state just finally threw up their hands and said, we can't afford to have these. So that's why these detention centers are overloaded now is because these got closed down. So this DRI, I think they need to probably reevaluate. These kids need to have rights. There's no doubt about that. But uh, they're gonna end up with where we don't have any place for them to go. I mean, even these detention centers, I mean, at some point, will they not have anybody that can, will work at? You know, so these are things that we need to think about, you know? You don't wanna tell somebody like this, a watchdog, to not do their thing, but you know, you don't want it to get overdone, you know? So I think that's something that they're, all, all of our detention centers sound like they're having issues with. Let's see, salary proposals and, and that really is. Attorney. Okay, they're gonna try to get an attorney to help them recover some of their losses, because we have actually, you know, they haven't been able to get their full loan soon enough over there on this new pods that they're building. So now that's costing more interest, plus the uh, not having kids in that facility, you know, you, so it's not paying for itself yet. So in any event, uh, they're, they're gonna get with attorney about checking on that. Alright, um, I got this. I'll pass around to you just a quick go over that stuff. You're sure can look at it. There's the check registry. I put that in a paper clip. I'll pull that out unless you guys wanna go through all them checks. It's just a lot of paperwork. If you look through these, you know, you get the revenue report. Actually, for, for Central Iowa, they've got so many other things and you can look through these, like the detention totals, the community totals, operational totals, to see where they actually make detentions their smallest money revenue. Which the other ones actually help offset the cost because it still isn't their smallest expense. So you can see on the expense report. I'll pass these to around, uh, then the Central Iowa detention, the uh, net worth, you, you can see that's on. And you just look that over, it's pretty self-explanatory. And uh, then there's the aging report on billing. Usually we're in pretty good shape here, but we don't have, you know, some of them like Fort Dodge or Webster County, Fort Dodge. Uh, their, their bills are usually pretty, pretty significant. They, you know, Marshall, Marshall County like that as well. Um, but you can, you can look through that aging report to see all the other counties that are stacking up compared to us. We do a pretty good job there. Thank you, miss, madam owner for keeping our bills paid. Makes us look good. Uh, monthly uh, routine expenditures, you can look through that. And then uh, non-month, non-routy, routine personnel report, like here's where it shows where this guy hired on and then and then resigned right away. And look at that, uh, there's a couple other ones that are a little bit deeper down here that are always pretty interesting. Um, the guy that used to harass the executive director, Tony, but the uh, his hours worked, but he actually always shows his hours worked on that. They can look that over. Uh, the detention report, these are the ones that are interesting. It shows you by county, how many, how many bed days and stuff they have here. But then this one here is, that I always find interesting is, I just don't always think about how many kids have we got out there that are kinda dangerous, you know? And uh, you know, and we were talking about mental health. I wonder how many that stems from not reaching them soon enough. And I'm gonna, anyway, I'll pass these around, cause we're ready for the two thirty-five Johns here. Okay, I'll let you. Um, we're, we're a little bit late for nine thirty-five, but uh, John, if you'd like to come up here and talk to us about Hungry Canyon Alliance Program, appreciate that.
Yeah, so uh, the Hungry Canons Executive Committee, which Paul is the chairman of, has asked me to come and um, meet with each of my nineteen county boards, uh, just to because there's been so much turnover on all the boards all across my nineteen county area, that just let them know, you know, what we're, what we do. So, Western Iowa is really unique. This Hungry Canons Alliance Program is unlike anything else anywhere in the country or probably even the world. Um, and the reason for that is because we have these really deep less soils. Which, um, if they're dry, they're, you know, they, they can stand vertically, they're darn near hard as concrete. Um, but as soon as you get it wet, they'll erode quickly. We have, because we have the Missouri River relatively close by, then our streams have a relatively high gradient down to the Missouri compared to, think about from here to the Missouri compared to from here to Mississippi. The other side is a lot shallower. And then on, you have a, a county road basically surrounding each square mile. So because of all those factors, that means there's a lot of road stream interactions, okay? We, as a society, uh, channelized our streams back in the early nineteen hundreds. And uh, and because we have these deep less soils, they started to downcut. Some places like, you know, um, Central Iowa, you know, that has till really close to the surface. You can channelize a stream and till and it's not gonna go anywhere because the soil is so strong. Because we have lots, it chose to downcut. And so now our streams are, you know, twenty, thirty feet deep, whereas, you know, a hundred years ago, you could curve it across it and, and reports from older folks who've done that. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good. Um, so Hungry Canons exists to help rectify that. We, we get a state appropriation of five hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, and then each county puts five thousand dollars in for my salary and for lobbying expenses. And then uh, basically all that five hundred thousand dollars goes to construction projects. Some cities like Dennison has gotten a project in the past, um, but mostly it's all that money goes to, to the counties. So over the twenty-five years we've been doing this, Crawford County has received three million dollars from Hungry Canons. Uh, and uh, we've got so you've received three million dollars from the, from our normal pot of money, which um, is eighty percent cost share on anything that has great control. And you've done fifty-four projects over the twenty-eight years or whatever. Uh, and then every time there's EWP, so if we're, if Western Iowa counties are declared a disaster area, the NRCS has an emergency watershed protection program that will also uh, provide cost share to fixed projects. Sometimes those projects have great control. And so, um, like last time it happened, uh, twenty nineteen, the NRCS paid for seventy-five percent of those great control projects. We paid uh, ten percent and so the county only had to pay fifteen. And you got uh, sixty-five thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars. So all told, with EWP, Hungry Canons, you've got seventy-eight projects that you've done over the years in Crawford County. So a lot of work. So, um, just real quickly, I don't know if you guys saw this handout. Okay, um, so what you have in Western Iowa, or sorry, here in Crawford County, you have a lot of weirs. So, um, if I show a picture of a, this is what a weir should look like, sometimes they'll get blown out if we've used the wrong kind of rock. Basically, rock in Western Iowa is really bad. Uh, the limestone that you can quarry here will fall apart in a few years because of freeze thaw. Um, and so now, ever since probably twenty fifteen, and Paul's probably bringing it in forever, but um, like Congregate or Crawford County will probably get all their rock from Sioux Falls, from the Sioux Falls area. Counties further south of here, getting a lot of their rock from actually northern Buick, comes in on the rail line. Um, and that's just because of the rocks.
What kind of rock that comes from over there?
Dolomite. It's kinda like limestone, but it's, it has a different chemical structure, so it doesn't um, degrade as quickly. So, most of the weirs, in-stream projects in Western Iowa are, are, are done. Like all the counties have basically control, stopped the hemorrhaging. And um, now, most of the projects the Hungry Canons is doing is in the upper reaches of the watersheds. So like um, culvert replacements. Uh, or sometimes you'll have a, a head cut move up to a culvert outlaw. Paul, platform, still in base, the Hungry Canons will pay eighty percent over, or we'll add a drop in like two hundred over. And the only other thing I would say that Hungry Canons does is we kinda act like an advocate for water-related issues. And um, so something that just kinda came up recently was uh, the Corps has changed their regulations. Um, no laws have changed, but the way that they interpret the laws has changed. And so, um, uh, it's been, it's become harder to do just about anything in the stream. So, you know, prior to twenty twenty-two, you, if there was, you could do up to three hundred feet of stream work without having to get a permit. Now, um, if you impact more than three hundredths of an acre, you're gonna have to mitigate. So we were just talking about that earlier last week, just ways to avoid having to go down that road. So, um, I don't know, you guys have any questions for me?
I was just curious, John, you said Hungry Canyon, Canons is nineteen counties? So what are the other, and they get five hundred thousand from the state for those nineteen counties?
Five hundred thousand from nineteen counties.
For the nineteen counties. So what do the rest of the eighty counties do? Is there a Hungry Canyon that covers?
No, like I said, this is, this is probably the only thing like this in the entire country, if not world.
So in the state of Iowa, this just affects these nineteen counties. The other counties don't do anything.
That's right, cause they don't have the problem. But the fact that we have these less soils, the fact that we have a, a, a mo, a, a road around every square mile. That's, that's the issue.
So when did they start doing that? How old is Hungry Canyon?
Uh, it started in the late eighties. We got our first funding in ninety-two. It was federal funding, um, but when earmarks went away in twenty-ten, we haven't received any federal funding since.
Do you have any idea why they call it Hungry Canons?
Yeah, because uh, yeah, the streams are hungry and
That's what I was, I just, yeah.
And they eat the soil and the banks and, and they, then they become Canons.
Cause they're always called Hungry Canons. Yeah, now it makes all perfect sense. I appreciate you. It's very interesting.
Yeah, and then your logo basically outlines all the
Yes, exactly.
It's an excellent.
I appreciated the pictures especially.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I, I sent this to the honor.
Oh, I didn't, okay. I'll have to, I mean, you got us this morning and didn't see it.
That's fine. So there's a copy of this in there if you wanna see it.
That question, John, if, if we were to uh, get a, a soil restoration finalized, would you be willing to help us find some of the reasons why Crawford County soil is unique? To uh, the rest of the state?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As, as you, I would, being you as maybe an expert on the situation, then, so we need some verbiage help and stuff.
Cause we, like you said, we are unique in our region, our area, our soil.
Definitely.
Do you ever see federal funding coming back? Have you lobbied for federal funding at all or?
We used to lobby and then we kinda gave up. Nowadays, they talk about federal money coming back, um.
Was that EPA money or?
No money or? It always came through NRCS. NRCS just basically act as a pass-through. We were a, you know, a nearmark.
Okay, so I wonder if something on the farm bill or something.
That's, you know, usually we, there would be a contingent that would go to BC and, and lobby for uh, for federal funds. And we were successful for a number of years. Uh, we would get up to a billion, a billion and a half dollars every year that you could use to supplement our state funding, state appropriation, state pretty much a half a million dollars every year.
For a long time.
And that's been good. It's helped us sustain the operation, but then they, they eliminated earmarks. And we were a nearmark, and so they eliminated that. And it's been a little bit tough to, to uh, climb that ladder again, I guess, to try and get a nearmark uh, for the program.
Last time we went in twenty-twelve, the, the legislators out there explained to us that everyone has a certain amount of capital, like uh, influence, influence capital that they can spend on. And they would rather spend their influence capital on big projects rather than trying to get us five hundred thousand dollars. And that made sense to me. Um, but at the same time, it's unfortunate that it works like that.
At least it makes sense to you.
Yeah, yeah. But if we were asking for a billion dollars, it'd be a totally different.
You could just get awarded a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a project, a bridge replacement project, uh, in sixteen.
That's right.
Um, yeah, through the program, uh, we're gonna replace that bridge with a twin box culvert, you know, we're gonna put a foot outlet on, on the outlet end of that. And so uh, there was quite a bit of discussion about And so, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion about that, that particular project in terms of funding, because we can fund it with our bridge replacement funds. Uh, but I argued the case that, you know, we could fully fund any project with any sort, any funding source. And, you know, our, our goal is to try to supplement our normal funding streams with the grant dollars. So, um, the first one of that kind that was actually approved. And so that could open the door for more projects, which would be a good thing, because we still have great control. Whether it's great control on a gravel road or it's great control on a high volume farm-to-market road, it's still great control. So I hope it does. I hope we get additional applications, and then that gives us the case, you know, to, to go and perhaps get additional resources for those, uh, great projects. Uh, I think any of you that have seen any of the projects that are in place, if you look downstream, you'll generally see raw banks, you know, continuing on downstream. If you look upstream, you'll see stable vegetated banks.
Yep.
And so there's a lot of benefits other than just protecting our infrastructure. There's benefits to water quality. Uh, and a variety of, uh, environmental things associated with it. So it's been a great program. John's done a great job. He's been there for a long, long time. Bill White, my predecessor, Neil O'Shaw, who's a county engineer in Shelby County, were pretty much, were some of the leaders in, in starting the program back in the day. So to their credit, it just happened to start in ninety-two. We got funded.
Yeah.
And in ninety-three, we had the great flood, and so the program kind of took off. There were floods with the need. And so it's been a good, a good program. And i- i- and the other thing about it is it's very easy to administer. We get a great value in terms of the administrative cost relative to the, the dollars on the ground. And we continue to.
I'm the only employee, so I'll take care of everything. And I don't like paperwork, so.
Uh, so that's a great, great, you, you want your office.
Yeah. Are you the, are you the new rep then that replaced, uh, um, Scoob? Or? Yeah, okay. Great. All right. Well, any other questions for me?
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you, John. Appreciate you coming. Yep.
I want to follow up with you on the, on the soil. How, how do you want to follow up on that?
Uh, we'll follow up with him once we hit that point, I, yeah.
I think that's good, because that could be, that could be, uh, Shelby County and Crawford County.
Yeah.
Right, that would be consistent.
You can just have, uh, so John's official title is a, uh, a geomorph.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a geomorph. So I'm a, I'm a, basically a geologist who studies how the landscape changes over time because of streams and water.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I took a ton, a bunch of soil classes and, so, yeah.
Interesting.
I'm not an engineer.
All right, well, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you very much, John. Always good to hear about rocks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on my way to either.
All right, thanks, now.
John's done a great job for us over many years, and it's been a really good program. Again, if you can't find any additional funding streams.
It'd be nice to find a better funding net.
Something back there, the things that we do.
Valuable.
We've been able to incorporate some of those. We've got actually four projects now, three culvert projects, and the fourth one is a big home project that we're funded, so it's worked out pretty well. Well, anyhow, um,
welcome back.
Just have, yeah, thank you. I just have one, uh, one, uh, permit there. We've had a couple of them now this year, so these are basically just service line crossings. Bridge project, item two there is going great. Yeah, they're just, uh, everything they do has been good, from their paperwork to their construction work to their core communications. It's good experience, so it's kind of nice to see. And then, uh, in-road, same thing. I mean, they're, you had the pre-con on that last Thursday, and they want to start on that by the middle of, middle of April. So, yeah.
No, Mr. Nance, where do you want to get his gravel pile hauling out fast enough, so?
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be pretty fast and furious there for a while, when they, once they move in, so. Uh, but it's all good.
Yep.
Um, the guys, I mean, they're just, you know, it's snow on Sunday. You know, and this time of year, you just never know what you're gonna get. So, um, but plain roads, home, spotting rock, cutting trees as, as conditions allow. And, uh, we're gonna, Bridge Crew's gonna probably move out there this week, and Great Crew, as soon as things get fed, we'll be getting going.
Did Tim get ahold of the people we needed to yesterday? He called me, I referenced a couple phone numbers or something.
Yeah, we're gonna go down there south to Tom's Staley's and start.
Yeah, so you want to know who, how to get ahold of some of the owners.
Yeah. So, so that's where we're gonna head first, a good project to start on. Um, the, uh, three hundred sixtieth bridge. Yeah, I, in fact, I just got an email. I was looking at it back there, um. He went and looked at it last week, and he says, well, we was replacing the plank, and I didn't say anything, and he went and looked at it, and he said, we'll just replace the whole deck.
Same type deal.
Same deal. And so, um, just a little history, there's three railroad overpasses down in Iowa Township by Askew Wall, Vanelle area. They're just north of one forty-one, and then there are three underpasses. So the three overpasses are on our roads. They're bridges over the railroad. And we'd been working for years with them to try to do something, because there was one that was in really bad shape. We finally came to an agreement where they would do all the work, and we would provide the materials. They put new decks on, replaced any stringers, uh, in the superstructure that were bad. And it was a great partnership. So we provide the deck, they replace it, do all the work, and that bridge is gonna be good for another twenty-five years, probably, maybe longer. And so they did that on the one at three hundred ninetieth street, one on the Carroll County line, and one that we have left is on three hundred sixtieth street. Plank are getting really bad. And so, uh, so we're proposing to do the same thing there, and I got kind of a very general price system, their cost estimate of about thirty-four thousand for the materials. So it doesn't, you know, it isn't like it's for free, but it's a whole lot better than us having to do all the work and dealing with flaggers and everything associated with it.
And this one doesn't have the overhead power lines like the first one. That was kind of a challenge to it.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, as long as they're willing to do the work, I think it's a good deal.
So this was a bridge. Paul, give you a little history. Our bus ride used to always went over this bridge.
Oh, really?
And back then, we didn't have to have assigned seats. And so when we'd be coming across this bridge, everybody in the bus would pile to the back. And we'd encourage our bus driver to speed up, and then he'd ramp the, the bridge, and everybody would fly.
You'd fly up out of the seats.
That's that bridge.
That's that bridge. Did you ever hit the ceiling?
Oh, yeah.
So, anyhow, so that's a, that's a good development. I've been working on it since last fall.
Good, good, I mean, it's good working relationship we've had with, with them in the past.
It is, yeah. So I'm hopeful. I mean, I haven't, haven't, unable to read his email here, but, uh, that, that's what we talked about last Thursday, just moving forward. He was gonna follow up, and I was gonna follow up and make sure that it was okay with everybody, that that's the plan. So, um, the spring auctions today, so I was down there earlier this morning. They're gonna have a good day, I think, in a good crowd, so, uh, we'll see, uh, there's a lot of stuff down there. We'll see how it sells, so.
Good weather for it, too.
Oh, it's perfect, yeah. They'll have a big crowd today.
We'll wager. Bring more down there or on Purple Lake.
I'm not gonna wager all of that, because that'd be throwing good money away, and I know what is gonna, what's gonna happen, so.
It should be a good, it's having a good value down there.
There's several, several people that are interested. Still the best place to sell things, other than probably our motor graders down there.
Right down there.
I mean, whatever it is, I mean, and I've found anyplace else where we get more value, and we always get more. And we pay a commission down there, you know, but I just soon see it stay here in town, okay?
Yeah.
With a local person, and, uh, and we've always gotten more than we thought.
We're gonna donate money back around the community, too.
They certainly are.
I like that it gives everybody the same chance to buy something that, you know, we're selling, just like with the, those motor grader blades.
Yeah, there's some of those down there. We got a lot of pipe, a lot of mine, reach curve blades. So, so anyhow, so, yeah, should be a good day. Uh, the Hungry Canyon, it's just letting you know that we did get that, and so that's a nice, uh, nice supplement to our bridge fund, so. So the, I mean, the debate was, is that we, you know, aren't normally using Hungry Canyon's funds on a farm-to-market roadway in a farm-to-market project that's funded with bridge replacement funds. So if you think about our checking accounts, we have our secondary road fund, our farm-to-market fund, and our bridge fund. Okay. And so my argument was, it doesn't make any difference where it comes from, because I could fully fund any project with basically any funding source, if it's a eligible roadway. And so I think we ought to be looking at those types of projects and, uh, and allowing people to use their grant money there as well.
Well, that one definitely warrants, the, the outlet side of that is, I mean, it.
There's a weir there now, okay, right on the end of the bridge, there's a weir there, but it'll come out, and there's, there's a, I mean, if you, if you look downstream, then there's another four or five foot cut that's making its way up to the weir. So it's, uh, it, it, it'll be a good project. So, and then there won't be a briser anymore. We'll have, we'll have a culvert there. So Europe and now hopefully we're working on that.
Excellent.
Yeah, so that's just a couple miles west of, uh, Locks Corner up there.
Yeah, we got a close proximity to that soldier, and then, you know, the cut deep.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the, uh, Westside Corns position, Chris retired, and, uh, I wish him well, thirty-five years, so, uh, got a guy, I said, done a lot of good things, and he's ready to move on. So, so, uh, we, we were advertising, open up anybody, and I've got, I think, nine applications so far. So, uh, several people from within. And, uh, so what we're gonna do is let it, let that go for till probably the end of the week. And then I'll sit down with the staff and we'll sort through those, pick three, two or three of those to interview, and try to get the position till here fairly soon. Yeah, I, I, great, uh, great slate of people to pick from, so I'm really pleased with that.
That just to me shows, like, you got a good reputation and your crew and your, how many nine people do that?
Yeah.
The job that, you know, the pay's good, the benefits are good, the, the working atmosphere.
Good boss.
Yeah.
He's good.
Well, a- and the difference between that, like, let's say, you know, your, your, your employees that are currently working for us, I mean, you, you go from being kind of one of the, one of the guys to managing the guys, so it's, it's a very significant. Three of those, but we've been fortunate to move people into that role and it's worked out well.
He's up in another job.
Yeah, and, and then we'll have some other ones, so that, that kind of segues into the next little item there, is that, uh, I'm gonna advertise here. I'm probably, probably gonna do it this week, because I don't know how this transition, you know, form in, where that all winds up. I need to get somebody hired for the Bridge Crew, and then a truck, a part-time truck driver for, for the summer. So if you know of anybody, you know, that's, that's looking for something, and working for two seasonal employees, one for the Bridge Crew, and one for driving a semi-tractor trailer in the gravel hall. Cause the gentleman that we had last year's not coming back this year. So, uh, we do have a nice slate, as you just approved this morning, you know, having been really fortunate, um, to get a lot of seasonal help and to have them continue to come back. Most of these people on this list have been coming back for several years now. So, uh, so it's nice to have those people.
What are you advertising for your help? Where do you?
I go to, uh, Channel eighteen, I, I do all three of them, the advisor, the, uh,
You know, you used to engage your local force or?
I, I do the three local.
Paper.
Two papers, and then the, uh, and then the Channel eighteen is usually what we do.
Semi-drive was probably fifty hours a week then on the gravel.
It will be during the gravel hall. Yeah, that's all we're looking for, just somebody to, to run a tractor trailer, trailer during the gravel hall, so.
Okay.
Should I put your name down?
Might be a problem.
Could be.
I don't even know how to drive.
Well, I got a CDL.
Pretty nice truck, I'll give you that.
But, uh, that brings up another note. I was talking to another county. I don't know if we'd be willing to do this, and they haven't asked, but we're, we're, we got everything set up to train our own CDL drivers now, thanks to Tim, Tim Berry's. Kind of taken the bull by the horn. I don't know if we'd want to open that up to, you know, other counties, if you had a neighboring county that wanted to send somebody up and, you know. No one's asked, but I was talking to another county employee in another county, and they said that they were having new employees, and it was an issue. You know, because they don't have a CDL, and, and, uh, and so, uh, I don't, I just.
I don't, the only concern I'd have into that is we, these employees are full-time already, and bringing more load on to them, or what are they gonna be, are they gonna be? I mean, there's obviously, as you stated two weeks ago, there's times during the year where there's voids need to be.
Winter time, you know, it's summertime.
We can't, have a neighboring county seven, send two guys over, can you help me with it during construction season?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I could see if it's a slow time, and you're gonna put on a class anyways, and you have two people there, five, or, you know, it
Yeah.
Wouldn't be as big of an issue as like centering construction.
We'll see if anybody asks. Go from there. But it is a nice, I mean, it just kind of makes that point.
Careful what, when you're advertising your gravel halls, be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, to have the ability to have our CDL training at house.
Yeah.
You know, it's always great showing him.
For us, yeah.
Maybe hiring some people, but, uh, it's nice to have.
They're not gonna come in and cherry pick our CDL drivers like our gravel.
Summit, the gravel summit, that's what I'm referring to.
Oh, that, yeah. Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, but anyhow, um, okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kane, sir.
That's all I have here today.
Appreciate it.
Oh, the, uh, I think there was one of those, bringing a gentleman, just, uh, uh, you know, Robert Coghill from Coghill Arm Supply. Um, I thought it was an interesting insight from industry. You know, I don't, I don't know what kind of, uh, input you're getting. The counties that got paid, they got, they got ten thousand dollars each. There were forty counties that opted in, and some opted completely in, some opted partially in. Uh, we did not get it all. But that, that's kind of where it stands. I don't know philosophically, I mean, I think, you know, it's just, uh, one of those things that, you know, we, we talked about getting it, and all systems that permit for our semis. That might be a little hypocritical for not allowing people to do that. So we decided, I don't know, I gotta go there. It is a lot of weight. It's hard on the trucks. Uh, you know, if you put that kind of weight in, and you're pulling off the highway and it went out on a gravel road, it's, it's a lot of extra weight. And so, uh, I just thought it was interesting. I don't know.
Tires on the ground.
Yeah.
Ran across the bridge, and that'll be in one span.
Let me know if you want to do anything different. I mean, I could, I could certainly have, have them come up if you want.
And I'm a trucker, you're taking it with you.
You know.
I drive on those roads where we tear up.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I wouldn't mind talking to them, but I just don't, like, just the damage it could cause scares me. I like it, perspective that should have been on, you know,
Five axles.
Five axle trailer or trucks configuration of left and right back.
But the governor's proclamation was great.
Yep.
It was okay. It was just timely. It was a good time of year.
On your, your, your dryer that time of year, you're not gonna be tearing so much up.
But you could spend ten thousand dollars on a couple of batches, one batch.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long.
I just.
So I mean, uh, I mean, we could still take it. We could play the game, but it's like, I don't know if it's.
I don't think it's gonna last. My own opinion is, it's, state government does not like to have very much diversification within counties and, and on road systems. I just don't, I think they'll go away from it.
Yeah.
They would go away, or they're forced to.
They're either gonna, they're either gonna go away or we're gonna be forced, yeah, exactly. So, thanks for now, we just.
Hey, considering the lobbies up there, we're gonna get forced to.
Right. Thanks, Paul. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Have a great day.
Yep, well, too.
Okay.
Yep, Mark, I, let's get on to our ten o'clock. I need, uh, Martha, is that good? Are you coming up here to help us out?
Yeah, Colin is in depositions right now.
Okay. Good pitch hitter.
Oh, well, so, uh, my understanding is that the board would like a petition to intervene filed. Is that what?
Well, after, you know, Colin did a little bit of research, you know, originally we thought that it would cost us, you know, all this money if we did intervene. But my understanding is, you know, all it really is, is that if something isn't the way we want it in our county, at least we'd have a seat at the table, correct me at any time if I want more of that.
Um, so there's two steps to it. So an intervention, um, you know, obviously a number of us, I think, are already getting the notices of the electronic filings. Um, an intervention would give us a seat at the table. However, they have the upcoming evidentiary portion. So we would have, uh, intervention and then a notice that we're going to participate. Um, and then when we participate, that's when we would submit anything if we wanted to, as far as specific to Crawford County.
So what our, our concern has always been is, uh, But what our, our concern has always been is, uh, was our problem when we went to talk to the governor also. We don't know what the final product is gonna look like, we don't know exactly, you know, what they're, what, what questions we'd need to ask, because the parts are moving a lot, you know, still yet, so if we don't have our, I, I would just call it a, place marker at the table that we could, could get our information and, and be able to, uh, put our objections out there. But if everything's just exactly the way we thought it was gonna be, everything's fine, we have nothing to object to, we just don't have to be at the table. And it hasn't cost us taxpayers of Crawford County any money, but if there's something that we feel we need to protect our citizens against, anything that comes up that we didn't foresee, then that's when we would entertain hiring an outside attorney that would come in and, uh, uh, plead our case for us basically, and we could then enter, uh, in with the other counties that are, uh, objecting and see if we wanna pool our funds and, uh, is, am I still on the right track?
Yes, yes, as far as, so, the, um,
Right, that's all I'm talking about, yep.
So Martha, this initial, if we approve this intervention would be done by you and Colin?
Yep.
Not by Baylor's.
Additional funding.
Just our regular pay that we already get.
Because I would, you know, because of our soil and all the things that, that go on that we're not even aware, you know, that we could have concerns about, I just think it would be derelict of us to not have our, or, uh, parents in their intervention and then not use it if we don't need it, that is just.
The timeline, I guess, Martha, what's the, what are you intervening for what occasion, I guess?
Sure, so, uh, they're getting ready for their, um, like an evidentiary hearing, it's how they, gather the official information for the utilities board to make its final decision and then, um, not necessarily a thumbs up or thumbs down on the permit, but mostly going back to the companies, the various, um, applicants to say, okay, based on the information we've gathered, we need you to address these items here, so by doing a petition to intervene, that would then give us the ability to file a notice to participate in that evidentiary gathering, so that we could present something specific to Crawford County, whether it was soil related, whether it was, you know, some other.
Right.
Information.
And you'd be the one at the table.
Yes, um, but with the caveat that, uh, you would get probably, um, we would have high quality services, but Tim Whipple is, it's more specialized.
Okay.
Um, we would definitely not seek out, um, an expert, anything like that, that the pooled counties are doing.
Well, well, my primary concern would be like the Iowa State study and making sure that, but, you know, I mean, in our discussions with Summit, it sounded like they were, all, you know, I mean, that, that, I think they were looking forward to the stat, just the study as well, at least that was my, you know, the one I gathered from them. So I, I think that, uh, you know, I mean, we, I, I see where Jeans wanted to go here, you know, give us a, a voice. If something.
Yeah.
Went, went cra- went crazy, and that's probably not the worst idea, I mean, I, 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 I left that last meeting that we had with the two young ladies. I mean, I, I felt that they were really working hard to actually go beyond.
But that's all verbal.
Yeah, and that's all verbal, exactly, and it's nice to have, have a little bit of foot behind the booty, you know.
And, you know, ultimately for Crawford County, it's, it's going to be, um, our, um, engineers out there, you know, checking on the progress as it's going, who are going to raise the flags of, something's going wrong, they're working when it's too wet, they're, you know, not doing that, and so I think if the board has enough communication with, um, you know, our engineering inspectors, just to make sure that they are aware of the expectations of the board when they are doing that.
So this, it, it ability to intervene would even go beyond their initial rulings and stuff, I mean, it would go.
It would, we would, we would have to see, um, what the utilities board, what steps they were taking as far as what steps we would take.
Okay.
Right, we would not have, uh, a primary seat like the Office of, um, Consumer Affairs, um, you know, that sort of thing, but we would be, um, farther up than just members of the public who write in their support or objections.
Martha, would this be an avenue that we just got to talk with John, the hungry canyon's that you've mentioned? Our low soils and how specialized they are.
Yep.
To just classify that, hey, this is what we're dealing with?
Definitely so, any Crawford County specific documentation, studies, reports, we would be able to submit those without a problem. It's just we, Colin and I would not be looking to find an expert, retain an expert, um, anything of that nature.
I was just wondering if the door was locked.
Give us a little bit, please, Martha.
So, um, we have it as actually, I take that. And so with the information that we've gathered and the fact that there's still so many unknowns, uh, the fact that our attorneys can go ahead and, uh, present that for us on our behalf and we can, uh, choose not to use it over again, I would make a motion that we go ahead and file an intervention. Board and keep, uh, keep them, uh, at this cutting edge of knowing what's going on, so that we at least can, uh, tend to be at the table. And if we don't need it, we just won't use it and we'll just continue on, but without it, we've lost our seat at the table.
Would that be your, Colin's recommendation, people?
The only way we get something specific to Crawford County solely focused on Crawford County's interests, is to do something of this nature, I mean, obviously the board can write in.
An ordinance, but, I, I mean, we could have a county ordinance, right?
Oh, definitely so, but as far as the I U B administrative process itself, this would be the only way to have something very specific to Crawford County.
Presented to them.
Presented.
You know, something we actually talked about early on was like, because of our soils.
Yep.
And how they wrote deep and worried about them being deep enough under our creek beds when they bore, put these pipes in. That was one of the original questions we actually had, so I mean, maybe this is something that benefits us.
We're one of those nineteen counties that have that specific soil that, uh, you might not be aware of, uh, when you start working and it gives us a chance to.
And I don't know if I wanna be in on all the other.
Yeah.
I think our folks in Crawford have kinda, you know, spoke three quarters or more than three quarters one way about how they feel, I mean, we do, we have some people. So I mean, we may wanna step up if it looks like somebody's getting bullied or something, but.
For sure, but ultimately it's going to come down to those individual landowners making that decision, I mean, we, we can't act, for them, we can act for Crawford County, and that's our job. And then the soil ordinance, that would be, we could do that separately, we could do a conjunction with this. One is not necessarily hinged on the alert.
But there's a time limit on this intervention, we, we wait.
What is the time for?
Um, I know they sent out the scheduling order and I printed it and it's on my desk, but I don't have it with me, I've got my.
It's coming.
My big thick H L P packet.
Ms. Hayden's actually made a motion, like, do you have a further discussion?
This has no way binds us to open ended.
No, correct. Correct, they, uh, that's, you know, we gave Colin the authority to speak to, to someone to verify that. That's, that's what made me decide that we should go ahead and do it, cause we've.
And we wouldn't have to have him unless we got.
Yeah, and Tim is available whether we wanted to pull in with the other counties or if we wanted to hire him, um, on the ordinance side of it.
Then we're obligated, if we pool with other counties, we're obligated to spend what they're wanting to spend, although we're wanting to.
Right, they've had, they've had a couple more counties join in, so it is, the pieces of the pie are getting smaller, but there, there are still pieces of the pie, that they have to pay out of their general.
I imagine the pie's getting bigger though, so the pieces probably aren't getting as small.
Yeah.
More counties in, I would imagine.
I like dependent art folks.
More ingredients get thrown into the pie.
This could potentially could be a, additional tool in our toolbox to.
Exactly.
For sure.
Exactly.
Yeah, we don't have it, then we don't have that tool.
We haven't got a second, yeah, we've got a, okay, we've got a second for Mr. Dozart.
Now he called.
Do we have any further, no, call the question? Uh, all, all in favor, states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Close now. Careful time.
We'll get it on file this week.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next thing we have is our ten fifteen, really five minutes. Child abuse monthly proclamation, child abuse month. Still have our fans from last year, guys, you see that, we, we, we supported all year long, right?
We come on back from here, actually.
I'm back in here, guys.
What's that?
You wanna be the chair for me?
Oh, they, everybody has a piece of the puzzle, right?
All right, well, welcome, everybody. We appreciate you all coming in today, this is obviously an important item on the, uh, agenda. And, uh, all of the teachers kinda take off here, I'm sure you got a whole system you've been.
Yeah, so, you guys remember your number, remember who you're after, okay, and then we'll go ahead and read it.
Child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every second of our community and requires action from everyone. We, the children are the most valuable resources and will shape the future of Crawford County.
Child abuse and neglect are, of course, when people find themselves in a stressful situation and don't know how to cope.
The majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged, caring community.
Every child can have a great childhood by making sure each family has the support and education they need, in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment.
Effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of harnesses created among social, social services agencies, school-based communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community.
Community members must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families.
Therefore, we do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens to increase their participation, in building caring connections with families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live.
All right, outstanding.
We all wanna take some action.
First of all, adults who are not supervisors, please just say your name, starting outside.
Jody Mulbauer.
Okay.
Jenna Coster.
Amy Truckee.
Okay.
Cheryl Air.
Andrea Taylor.
That was the cavalry coming to. Okay.
Can't be in here.
Hey, smile. Clear your smile, come on. I can get it, Dave. All right, I'm good, thank you.
For playing March as child prevention.
I got a motion for Mr. Schultz and a second from Ms. Hayden, any further discussion here then? You do me a favor, you get that hammer up there when they, when they say it, when we hold on it, okay? All right, all, all in favor, states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, all right, go ahead and have.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Tell Molly hi for me as well. I don't know, I didn't like it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming. Yes.
See you guys, thank you very much. You forgot about Dave.
Oh my gosh, the kids.
The kids, the kids.
Next on our discuss soil restoration ordinance. Discuss, and this is just a discussion only, all right? But on our soil restoration ordinance, um, Paul, you wanna take that?
Why is one, dude, now that we intervene, I mean, is this, I mean, we had every opportunity to voice our opinion regarding the restorations. At that time, if it raises, the way I understand it, is that. I'm not against still putting one of these into play for future projects.
I agree.
And if we do also have concern that if we do this, a soil restoration project, is this somewhat tie the hands of X Y Z contractor out? Doing whatever kind of soil disturbance on private property.
If somebody's ordering on somebody else's.
Probably.
Say, like, the old farm place that we had cleared off last year.
You bet.
Does that? This would just come into play at that time. Sometimes you, there's unforeseen consequences of ordinances, and I mean, it's only gonna be a problem. Somebody, say, Dozart drove past my place. We had a, a few, you know, neighbor Hatfield and McCoy thing, he turned me in.
Yeah, you mean like even terrorist work or anything like that?
Terrorist work, you know, whatever, I mean, we're disturbing soil.
Right, you could definitely build in exceptions to the ordinance, um, I know an ordinance has been discussed, it's also been, with the, the eye of, you know, not just, um, pipelines, but also, you know, looking back at windmills, looking forward to solar, um, things of that, so it can be focused directly on, you know, energy type projects, or it could just stay generic, but then work in some exceptions so that, you know, it's not being used as a vehicle for Hatfields and McCoys.
The, uh, it's a good point, again, do we, are we? The, uh, it's a good point, again, do we, are we then pulling up a page out of a, a neighboring county's ordinance where they specifically named, you know, like we weren't just going after energy companies?
Yeah.
Are we holding, are we putting ourselves in a position we would not want to be in?
Well, we have the visitor from the company and the name escapes, escapes me right off the top of my head, where they said that they're looking at solar projects in Crawford, they're looking at.
That young lady that was from Canada.
Right, looking at additional types of projects, so we can, we can definitely look at, you know, a solar ordinance. We have, you know, for the wind, we have the partial, um, with zoning and then the construction compliance certificate. We can definitely handle these on an individual basis, or you can look at something more comprehensive.
So you could maybe even word something in there where it would be, uh, governance over exterior, but if you have a, you know, it'd be tough to do that, wouldn't it? Where, where, because you know, the landowners that are, you know, not like say those that would be signed up with Summit or something. I mean, they, they basically got an agreement with them to be on their property. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean.
X, Y, Z farmer said, yeah, someone go ahead and, and then we come and throw in ordinance and that restricts them and they're like, that's not, I didn't sign up for it, this is my property.
Yeah.
They can do what they want to do on their property.
Well, that's, that's something you gotta consider, very much so.
How does it, we kind of got to this point, wanting to just protect our, our land and, and our county. Some of that discussion was on our roads, bridges. And having a soil ordinance to make sure that, you know, you can come through and, and leave our infrastructure in less than what it is today.
Correct.
Correct.
With having Paul as the engineer and, you know, Ben as his assistant, we've got some really strong protections with just, with just who they are and, and how well they know the county. It would be more of, you know, obviously Paul's not going to be an engineer, you know, for years and years, and it would be more of, okay, this is what we want, you know, the, the engineer to make sure that happens. But then that would be not so much of an ordinance, as more of a, you know, directive towards secondary roads, you know, making sure that.
Once that permit is granted and, and the work is done, and if we have failures in our road systems, bridges, how do we go back and rectify those damages?
So it would depend on the specific type of damage, so if it was a subcontract, so when Summit's building, obviously, you know, they're probably going to use some subcontractors depending on whether it's roads, bridges, what types of roads. Looking at it, okay, so was it the subcontractor? Many subcontractors have to have some sort of indemnification with the company. So while, obviously suing Summit is, is always an option, we would want to look at who actually caused the damage, so then that party could look at making it right, otherwise.
Usually it lists all involved parties on lawsuits.
Right, but we would want to make sure we're targeted, just so that we're not, you know, like, oh, anything goes wrong, let's just sue Summit. It's like, no, we want to keep it focused on, yes, we'll bring them in because they're the reason the subcontractor is there, but we definitely want the, the person who did wrong to our roads and bridges, you know, to be fixing that.
Martha, could this same ordinance, you know, refer to that bond that we had always talked about? Or would that be a separate, you know, that the punishment would be that there's a bond out there that if it isn't left the way we wanted it, we could haul in the bond?
Sure, so you're looking at a couple different things there, because there are different types of bonds. So, um, we could have a bond, you know, specific to Crawford County, and whether that's posted by Summit or posted by the subcontractor, that's fine. We could, you know, if subcontractor already has to have some sort of indemnification, bond type policy with Summit, we would just want to make sure that our names are on the chat too. Um, so we could, we could craft it in an, either a separate document. Um, so for example, with Silver Queen, we reached a separate agreement with them just to address it since they were in progress.
Yeah.
We could look at doing something similar to that with Summit to be able to say, hey, we know you haven't been granted your permit yet, but you are going to be acting in our county. We want to make sure that, you know, what you guys talked about with the young ladies gets reduced to writing.
And that's, um, you know, if you don't require a bond, you know, if you don't require it, they don't want to have one available, they don't have to, but if you require it, that's where that kind of starts with the conversation of subcontractors. When they're bidding, they know that they're going to have to be able to bring in a bond. Uh, because if you can't get a bond certificate, if you're not a upstanding, uh, company that's, you know, had issues, and the insurance company doesn't want a bond to, and it tells you right there that, uh, they've had problems in the past. So just being able to get that bond tells you that they, uh, passed the, um, tests and the questions to be able to get a bond.
For sure, and I think, you know, the Silver Queen would be a good example of being able to reach some sort of agreement that where you did already have private landowners with agreements, it satisfied some of these overarching concerns of the county.
Things that they may not have considered or thought about, and then they wonder, I had no idea it's going to be left like this, what am I going to do? And we'd say, there's nothing we can do to help you. Now we would have something, a, a tool, another tool in our toolbox.
Right.
Make sure we're protecting our citizens.
And if what the young ladies from Summit were saying really did make you feel better about the project, then yes, we do want to get that reduced to writing. So then, that we, so that Summit knows that Crawford County's not just going to continually move the goalposts.
No.
But that we're able to then go back and, you know, get repairs timely done and have that.
So Kyle and Jean, everybody actually, our primary concern then is the board. I mean, especially since we have eighty, eighty-six percent, I mean, landowners that are already in, in occurrence. Um, our primary concern in ordinance, not only concern, but our primary concern then would be our, our roadways, basically our easement zones, and I, I'd still, you know, because of our soils and stuff, I, I still like looking after our, our waterways, not, not a waterway in the field, mind you, but you know, the Soldier River Valley and, and, and obviously the Boyer Valley, and, and these things that can be eroded deeply and in ten years, especially, you know, to me, we're not look, you're a wise old farmer. You're a wise farmer, I'll take away the. Alright, you, you guys. Hey, you're, you're in the red hat club, Dana. So anyway, uh, you guys would, would already going in be looking at these things, but let's just say a young farmer, you know, I mean, because we're always trying to pro- promote our young farmers and, and being able to start, buy some ground, doesn't real, you know, knows he's got a pipeline under there, but doesn't always, it isn't already always thinking about all these things. And all of a sudden, a pipeline shows up in a creek bed that runs through his property, you know. I, I, to me, that's where ordinances in particular come into effect, where we're, we're not just looking after today's, what's happening today, but what's happening in twenty years, or, and I mean, this pipeline, they just, they, they, they seem to think that, you know, this, as long as there's room up there in North Dakota, you know, if they get this in, they'll be pumping carbon up there. So, I mean, this could be ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, I mean, that we could be dealing with this pipeline going through Crawford. So I think that those are the things that if we would create an ordinance, that's what we're probably, our primary focus should be here, without robbing land, the, the rights that Kyle's talking about for the landowners. You know, I, would you, would, would everybody have an agreement with that, I think that would be.
Well, and going back to that Silver Queen agreement, that was very helpful for when we did go to the construction compliance certificate to be able to say, in the thick of it, this is what we negotiated with Silver Queen, now that we have a clear view of it. So if we're able to get something with Summit to get it on paper, we can then use that for that future agreement, something of that nature.
So I think that's the key to me, is to have, you, you use the term energy company, but I don't think you want to shrink it to that small of being, of saying energy company, because we're trying to look into the future and see in fifty, a hundred years from now, what are they going to try to pump or move, um, via pipeline through the county? I mean, I've read that if, you know, Summit, that's a thousand mile pipeline, and they said they get to carbon neutral by twenty fifty, you would need sixty-five thousand miles of pipeline. So Summit's not going to be the only pipeline that might be going through Crawford County at some point in time.
Right.
And it might not just be CO2, I mean, it, it could be oil, I mean, natural gas, I think.
Water.
Water, I mean, it'd be nice, e- even the rural water, I mean, they run their pipeline. It seems like we need to have.
That's where some of our bigger complaints came from, when they actually put in rural.
As it needs to include, you know, be all inclusive, not knowing what all inclusive entails.
So, so, to clarify, y'all's main concerns are roadways and your waterways, correct?
Yeah, I, 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 I think that.
Luckily you got to hear the canyons and the.
Yeah, yes ma'am.
Soil that we have here.
So I question, after what John said, you know, if they're going to go under a waterway, they're going to have to do that, you would be granted permission from the Army Corps of Engineers?
Yes, they're, they're the ones.
They're already, they're already dictating a lot of waterways, and if the federal government continues their stop against agriculture in the waters of the United States ruling. I mean.
On the driveway.
I mean, that's, sorry for that, but, I, I mean, they want to control of the, the cowpeas and the pasture, and where that water runs to, I mean, they probably have more teeth than any water crossing. So are we already, are we doing something we don't need to be doing that's already in place? I guess with some of this, when you stated you gotta get permission from the Army Corps to.
I, our.
Some of this.
We're doing restoration only here, correct? I mean, we're not just wanting to make his rules.
Right, no, I get that, but they have to, they're already, for restoring, we keep talking about waterways, they're restoring or making that waterway better than it was before they went through their according, according to the Army Corps of Engineers already.
And, and I don't know for sure what everybody's got in their contracts out there, but my, when, when I, 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 I'm, let me try to clarify Kyle, so you see where I'm, I'm talking. If in ten years, because, we just, just say that we misguessed on one creek and the pipe exposes, would you guys automatically come back and fix that?
Yes, sir.
And we could get that in some writing, like you were talking about earlier? And then, see, that's why, that, that was where I was going with the ordinance, or what would, would they come back and rebury that?
The way, the way they design drills these days are way different than back in the early days. You know, I, I've seen exposed pipe in creeks where they've eroded and you just see it, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, the way they design drills now, I mean, we're, we're twenty-five, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty feet deep underneath the lowest part of, I'll just use Des Moines River for example, because I've been looking at that drill. And so to do that, I mean, we have to step way back from the banks, I'm talking, it's a six, ah, you know, we might be two, three hundred feet back from the bank where we started. Of course, so whenever we come to the bank, we're so far back and so deep, it would be hundreds of years of erosion, right, and when that happened, then we would, of course, I'm not going to be here, but they would, they would assess at that point in time with ECDs, rock, whatever they had to do to get it covered back up. Um, but yes, I've seen those pipelines, you know, I've seen them exposed, but the regulations and the design wasn't there back then, but we have today.
Okay, a- and that was, that was my point, is if something exposed in the future, you know, not necessarily what you have to do today, but what you would, if it would.
Retrovac.
Yeah, exactly, that was my, on the, on the waterways.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was, I mean, if we, if we worry about ordinance on the roads, you know, it would be like, you know, when you're, when you're, when you do your bore, I mean, I don't even know for sure, the way it sounded, there, there might be a lot of trenching on across our roads too. See, and then you worry about where that you'll have the settling, you know, and you might have some.
I don't, I don't, I, I'd have to look at what the turnkey's doing, but from a constructability standpoint, if it's a traveled road and you have utilities running down it, the contractors, this is eight and ten inch pipe in your county. Your contractor is more likely, even if they can open cut it, to bore it. Because to open cut it, you gotta get permission from the county to shut the road down, you gotta get, I mean, this is a headache. And they can sit there and they can bore it a lot quicker and cheaper.
Okay.
Um, I would, I would stand pretty hard on that comment I just said. Now, if it's a two-track road, you know, a non-maintenance road with no utilities running down it, it's a possibility, yes, sir. Um, to, to open cut it, but I'm gonna say ninety-nine-nine percent of your county roads are going to be bored.
Jean?
The way that I would look at, at all of that is, if it's things that you're already planning on doing, and everything's all, it doesn't hurt to make sure we have it in writing, because nobody ever wants to assume anything, nobody wants to just, you know, let, let's go ahead and make it.
Well, on your roads, all your roads are permitted through your, your road engineer and all that. So all those permits are being reviewed, and they're, they're the ones that we negotiate with, hey, you know, do you want us to be eight feet below the bar ditch on this road, because you might be doing this or that? I mean, we've had those discussions, so those discussions are always open as we're working through the process of permitting the road bores. And again, those road bores are set out past your road right of way. Um, you know, and so we're going to be, our, our standard is five feet deep below your bar ditch, bottom of your ditch, right? So your ditch, say your ditch is fifteen feet deep, you know, we're going to be twenty feet deep underneath your road, you know? So, uh, that, that's our standard, you know, it's five feet below your, your ditch line.
Okay, obviously you're from Summit, I was wondering where you're.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Alright.
I've had a lot.
Yeah.
I drove, I drove fifteen hours yesterday, so I'm back, I'm sorry.
So the, uh, here, here's my thing, let's, I, we, we really don't know where Iowa State's going to come out on this, and I think the way it sounded, you guys were as interested to hear what their research brought, because it was going to be fair and.
Because of compaction study.
Yeah, the compaction study that they're, and, and that was one of our, our, our concerns for this, you know, this board. Uh, but with eighty perc, eighty-six percent of our people already having signed things, now they did say that, like, if someone comes in after we get this study, and just, just use this for numbers, because I have no idea what they'll be. Let's say five percent moisture rating is too, is too wet, and you'll compact or tear things up too much. And let's say the person or, or, if that, I mean, would, would Summit be against adopting what Iowa State came out with, saying that would be too harmful to soil?
Well, the, the, the Iowa Utility Board has implemented, I'm sure, based in the AINP, correct? Right, the Agricultural Mitigation Agreement Plan, which also reflects back on the chapter nine, uh, agricultural registrate, restoration of agricultural land during pipeline construction.
Yeah.
So our guidelines are in there, and those guidelines are reviewed and, and approved by Iowa. And then we have to abide by them, along with your county inspectors that are going to be out there. The county inspectors actually is what dictates if it's too wet or not.
So basically, if our inspector said, you know, we feel that Iowa State's thing is more, more in our liking, can we?
I, I don't, they would have, basically the state of Iowa would have to adopt that document, I believe, and I'm not legal.
Trying to figure out.
But, but what we have in place is the state, Iowa, Iowa is very concerned about compaction and rutting and mixing topsoil, subsoil.
Yep.
I've, I've read the AINP many, 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 many times, um, and then also chapter nine. Uh, I've, I've been on a lot of projects and I've never seen restrictions like this. Um, so Iowa, I believe, for, forefront is soil and drainage, right?
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I believe that wholeheartedly. And so, um, I feel like the steps that are put in place for compaction and rutting and mixing topsoil and subsoil is very sufficient. Um, I, I didn't know Iowa State was doing a study, I wasn't here during that meeting, I guess if y'all, y'all said, I, I don't, I tried to make all of them, that's hard. Um, and so if you haven't familiarized yourself with those two documents, I mean, it might put a little ease to you if you did.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, that, that's our, that's our, our regulations as of now, you know?
So that would be the standard that the inspectors would be using for all counties, for the entire state of Iowa?
Yes, ma'am.
So if Crawford County, because of the way our soil is, if we wanted an extra step on that, that would, would, uh, not be recommended, or are, are we not, are we not supposed, you know?
I can't, I can't honestly, I myself can't speak on that.
Okay.
We'd have to, like, have, working with John.
Right.
To make sure.
Right, that's.
You know, I mean, that might be a good thing to have him help us.
Need to just assume that they're.
We've got the, the low-sell thing, you know, and we're, we're, because when it is wet, the, the erosion runs deep, you know? And that's, and that's, and that's our primary.
So, so our process was, we'll talk a little bit about topsoil for that time, but process, right now, we're doing topsoil studies, right? Um, I don't know if y'all are familiar with that, have you heard it? Basically, we have a third-party company out there that's going out and probing all landowners that we signed up and everything, and they're telling them how much topsoil they have, okay? For the AINP, we have to peel that topsoil off, right, and stack it on one side of the right of way. So now we're dealing with subsoil. So all of our, all of our construction process is going to be done on your subsoil, right? So then when we did our ditch, which this ditch is not going to be any wider than twenty-four inches, because you got eight and ten inch pipe, I would be shocked if it wasn't sixteen in some, where your eight inches, but, and all, that's going to depend on the contractor.
Yeah.
So please take that lightly, what I just said. That subsoil is going to go on the other side of the ditch line. That subsoil's gonna go on the other side of the ditch line, pipe's gonna go in, subsoil's gonna go back, then we decompack the subsoil, a minimum of eighteen inch deep tillage, right? So we decompack three, a minimum of three passes, when your county, county inspectors say, hey, it's good, that's when we bring back the topsoil. We bring back topsoil and then we decompack that, so that's kinda a five-hundred-foot level of how we handle the soil and the decompaction and, and the bringing back of the, making sure you're not mixing topsoil, subsoil, so let's just say it rains, right? And it, it don't rain enough to per se, per our guidelines, the county inspectors say, hey, it's not, it's wet, but it's not too wet. One thing we don't have to worry about at that point in time is mixing your topsoil, subsoil, with compaction, yes. In that point in time, that's when you gotta look back, okay, we decompacted, it's not, uh, it, it's not where it was, so that's when we bring in the details, you gotta do the details anyways, right, to decompact. Uh, so I think they're taking the steps to make sure we're putting it back to, at the best we can after construction now. If we were just going out there and not peeling topsoil and digging a ditch and putting it in there, yeah, there would be, I would see where there could be some, some, some concerns.
Yeah, I guess my question is, a lot of this is, we're talking pre-construction studies, what do you wanna do to, oh, the restoration or the bond, something like that would be after the fact. Who, how do we know that you're gonna come back, that we ran into this already with other companies? You do the work, or you contract the work, or you subcontract it, well, it's not my fault, it's subcontractor's fault, or you run into a Friday afternoon, and we gotta hurry up and get this done, because we gotta be on that next mile before rain comes in, and a subcontractor doesn't hold up their end of what they, what they signed up for.
Okay, so.
How do we know without a bond or an ordinance that gives us some teeth to come back and say, you didn't fulfill your obligation and it damaged that road, it damaged that bridge, it damaged something we have after the fact? Just sitting here telling me that you'll come back and fix it, doesn't make me feel.
Gotta be right.
I, I, I understand that, and I, I, I'm not, that's not my.
Yeah.
Forte, I mean, I'm all construction, I can answer a lot of questions, but as far as a bond, and I've seen it every which way, I've seen bonds, I've seen road use mitigation agreement plans, I've seen all kinds of things, how Summit's doing, I don't handle that end of it.
But you know, my point is, that, great, Army Corps signs up, we have federal regulations, that's all pre-agree.
Yeah.
You follow that, that, that's right, that's out of our wheelhouse, but what is in our wheelhouse is, after the fact, when we have damages, who's gonna come in and fix it?
Well, I can, I can ultimately say Summit is gonna come in and fix it, but again, that's me saying that there's.
That's right, if it's not right, it's no one.
Exactly, and that's what.
So I, I haven't seen that road permits yet, I don't know if there's something in the road permits that state that, I, I don't know.
I kinda thought they could be tied together, because restoration is making sure that it is in place how it should be, or whether it's a soil or a bridge or a road or.
And, and again, your county inspectors that y'all elect are the ones that do the final sign-off on everything.
Yeah.
But there are times too, I mean, you might see a damage occur a year down the road.
Exactly.
And I, I, that was what I, I mean, is that what the soil restoration ordinance?
I'm thinking of more of a bond, because you can have a soil restoration deal, and when they leave, it's restored exactly to that, to that ordinance, but two years down the road.
Like, the bond.
This is. John can come in and say, that low-sill soil that we bored underneath that causes a bridge approachment to falter.
It's a discussion.
We have no.
Yeah, that's why I'm just discussing that we moved something greater than a restoration ordinance.
Yeah.
To, to something that we need to, a bond, some writing with their verbiage, how they're gonna do it.
Yeah, there needs to be some.
Are you getting all that, Martha? That's, that came out of fast and furious right there.
You're the construction person, if you could just shoot me who the person who would, who does the contract.
So what we need to do is have.
Because if they would've put that in two years ago.
Now.
They probably wouldn't have made any damage to.
He's a, he's a project manager over this area, and his phone number is.
Soil that don't bond back together correctly, regardless of what they do, but to achieve the restoration part of it, and unless soils, it might be two years from now before it. It might have a trench. Like Tom said, you can dig a two, one zero, straight up and down. Straight up and down, and it'll stay.
Yep, you're right.
My point, I mean, we just had it for the utilities coming to subcontract, and then we got into a lawsuit with, because the subcontractor didn't follow what they're supposed to.
Right, but if, so, so, so to kind of maybe ease you guys on the subcontractor thing, the contractor here in your area is gonna be associated, they're not gonna use a bunch of different subcontractors, one big contractor does pipeline work, and they're one of the best in the nation, I've worked with probably seven different projects, so it's not like you go out that, go and chase down Greg's boring company or something like that, um, they're, they're a very large, you can look them up.
They do all their own boring and everything.
Yes, sir.
With it just being a discussion item, uh.
Well, that's what this was for, we appreciate you coming in so that we can understand what you guys are, are intending to do. Kind of help us, you know?
If you reach out to Grant, he can help you with that.
Yes, we will get ahold of Grant Associated Pipeline, and then make sure we've got Paul and Sunquist.
Yes.
In the mix of starting to get some sort of agreement drafted, that hopefully will address some of these issues, particularly bond.
Yep.
Recovery types of things.
Okay.
So we got the discussion started, so.
Okay.
All good?
All right.
Thank y'all for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a great day.
What was your name again?
Isaac, uh, I S A A C.
I S A A C.
Last name is R I S S E E U W, resume.
That's buying a lot of vowels.
It is. Thank you, guys, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Isaac.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Martha, okay, that is, I can't even, I think, that's what we'll call them. Okay, uh, next, discussion with Sandy Wolf on Wolf's back.
All right. Here's a poster going around.
Thanks for all of us elaborated.
No problem, no problem. We haven't had a bash since nine, or two thousand nineteen, uh, COVID hit, and then he fell and got hurt, and then last year just got away from us. So we decided to put on the last hurrah this year. What?
I'm for me.
All right, for, for, we don't know for sure if it's our last hurrah, but, but, um, we're asking, uh, we would, would like to apply for a beer permit, and so we go through you guys, and then we'll apply for the beer permit, and then, um, Bernile Proil is gonna do our dram shop. So we'll be totally like a bar covered and everything, and, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout. So we just need to know if we can apply for the beer permit from you guys.
He's twelve.
Yeah, he's your relation, isn't he?
Yes.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought. Somebody says, you're getting Brad Morgan, it's like, yeah, we are.
That'll be fun.
His, um.
Who had a mobile related to?
Really? Everyone. We changed it to state discreet.
His cousin, your cousin's neighbor, his son.
Who wants to be a mobile?
Hey, oh, God.
I think you guys will be related to him.
Hear me?
Yeah, it never is.
There's a lot of those.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It sounded like good even.
Well, this is.
Yeah, and the first year we had it.
It's not hard liquor, it's just a beer.
Just the beer, beer wine permit. Um, the first year we had it, ten percent of the proceeds went to the animal shelter. The second year we had it, ten percent of the proceeds just went to the disabled veterans.
Disabled veterans.
Yes, so this year, ten percent of it's going to go to the, uh, veterans honor flight.
Nice.
So.
Yeah.
Very good, you're my permission.
Because we're just, we're just trying to, we wanna keep it, we wanna give it back to the local, I don't wanna give it to, like, just all veterans. I wanna keep it local, because that's what supports this, is the local.
Per local.
I wanna see more done with the local, uh, veterans and stuff like that, instead of going out of town, out of town.
Yeah, and I talked to Louise Galbraith.
Yes.
And she said, uh, that, the day of the event, she's gonna have flyers on the table, she's gonna have posters up on the vet fence, explaining what the honor flight is about, so.
It's a, there's a complete fence, uh, six, seven foot fence all the way around.
Yeah, all the, all the way around the whole bash area, so there'll be no handing here over. Uh, we have wristbands for the adults when they come in, we have people carding, so we have it all set up, we used to own a bar, so we just like, we kinda know what to do, and.
And this is just a temporary.
Just a five-day, just a five-day license, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, once everything goes through ABD, and your dram shop is approved and stuff, then I get an email, and then it comes to the board table for their, uh, their approval.
Okay, yeah.
We've had, the first year was two hundred and twenty-five without any incidents.
Yeah.
Nothing, the second time we had it was three forty, not one incident, not one argument, no, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's been pretty good, you know, knock on wood, and you very seldom have that with that many people in that smaller.
And a lot of people that do come to it have DD drivers with them, and the DD drivers get a drink pop for nothing all night long.
Oh, honestly.
So it's like, and then we have, you know, there's limited parking in Des Moines, so we have people on golf carts going down to the cars and bringing them up to the bash, and then bringing them back to their car, and, so, and then Hy-Vee will have food there. We used to give a free sandwich for every ticket.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was so much work, so it's like, we're having Hy-Vee there for food, and so Hy-Vee's gonna be cash on for their own. Own, own, own.
About three years ago, I fell sixteen feet off a bin, so I lost a lot of my memory, so I lost a lot of what I used to do, and so, uh, I mean, I, I look normal, but she can tell you I differ. But, uh, no, it's, uh, so it's, it's been a struggle, so I had to learn a lot of things over, so.
Oh, dear.
I get you.
Yeah.
So.
TBI is a pain in the butt, isn't it?
What's that?
TBI is a pain in the.
Yeah.
Mostly for the person that has drowned.
Yeah, and that's why I have to go with him to his doctor's appointments and stuff, because he doesn't.
Yeah.
See, you know, it's like.
I don't.
But the first thing the neurologist told me is, don't, don't you yell at that man. So Natalie always tells me that, you can't yell at. So.
It's tough, it's frustrating for him, and it's a challenge for the person that has to try to help you find your way through the fog.
It was so hard when he walked in the house, he built the whole house himself, everything out there, and he goes, walks in the house, he says, who did this? It's like, whoa, yeah.
Yeah, it's been.
Yeah.
I have all sawmill, so that's why everything up there, you see it's all done in wood, but I had to learn that all over, I had to learn my woodworking all over, so, just thank God for you two, you know?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully we have a good turnout.
Well, good.
Hope I can make it.
Yes, yes, I'm scaling up, letting you know, I'll help you.
I'll send my regrets, I'll probably be at the fair, state fair.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's going on then too, yeah, yeah.
And I do appreciate it, and thank you for, on behalf of the old vets that need to.
Yes, yes.
Ride to Washington.
Heard nothing, but, oh, the way, the people that have gone on that honor flight, they were just in awe, yeah.
You know, I've walked all the memorials up through the Capitol Mall there, and, and, I don't, you know, for the old vets, you know, it's just, it, it'll floor you, when you see kinda, they're all heading for the Washington Monument, and then the World War Two Memorial's right below it, even though Vietnam Memorial Wall is pointed right at the Washington Monument on the page that goes up that direction, but.
It wouldn't have.
It just, I, my appears mine.
Yeah, I have very serious minds right now, yeah.
We wouldn't have what we have now, that's for sure.
We appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. It's fun, I thought, we got the property, and I told them, I said, you built it, and they will come.
Yeah.
So Iowa, which is what we do here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
See you in August.
Yes.
All right, okay, well, thank you very much.
All righty, so we will, I will get the, yeah, keep doing your process through ABD, and, yeah, and Bernile and stuff.
Now, we wouldn't have.
We'll get it and roll, um, yeah, you'll get your certificate, I think, via email.
You know what, I never did that on the last two we had.
Oh, really?
Because they were working with RIGBRI, they do RIGBRI first.
So we never got a license.
Well, if anybody ever asked, they said, uh, just, here's your number.
If you don't get one, let me know, because I could go in and bring you one.
Okay.
Actually, they just gave you the number.
Yeah, they just get.
We had to have that.
Anybody says you don't have a beer permit.
We had to have that before we could get our, the beer there.
Because you guys are just outside city limits there, right?
Yeah.
So we had to, we had to wait for that day to get it, and I had to run over there that morning to get it, because we didn't have the number yet.
Yeah.
And they won't give you the beer until you have.
Yes, exactly.
So I had to wait and run over there that day.
If you have any hangups, let me know.
I will.
Hard to have a beer bash without hair.
I know, right? We ran out the last time.
Right.
We ran out the last time, we had to go, Rick had come into this bar and get us some beer, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you guys, very much.
Yep, have a great day.
Yes, you too.
Okay, discuss, take action. Resolution twenty-two-three-eighteen allocating American Rescue Plan Act funds as loss revenue. This is actually, uh, something that's actually allowed now to be able to move it into the general fund then, correct?
Yeah, it's out, yeah, it's through the final rules of the state and local fiscal recovery funds, um, yeah.
And we'll still, kind of, we'll still keep our monies penciled to where we actually already had them designated, so.
We had our last.
It, it still kinda runs under the governance of our ARPA board, so, or ARPA committee, I should say.
We actually, I think, disbanded our ARPA committee at this point in time.
Oh, have you?
Well, yeah, we met, and I think, what is there, just over four hundred thousand left?
We, uh, did the child care, a hundred thousand kind of set aside for some things, they had a broker with me, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, I think.
Yeah, you grabbed mine.
I got it.
But it's a tool that is gonna help us use our ARPA funds to provide services to the general fund.
Yeah.
Isn't that funny how that's evolved to a very strict regulation, could just dump it in.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
There it is.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the resolution for allocating American Rescue Plan Act funds to loss revenue.
Mr. Mulvar makes a motion.
I'll second that.
And Jean, Ms. Hayden seconds it, and it's a resolution, uh, Ms. Hayden?
Aye.
Mr. Mulvar?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Rulmar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And I'll pass this around.
Resolution passed.
On Friday morning, trying to where we're at.
Should I sign by my name?
On the back.
Oh, I suppose, well, you know, keep it interesting.
This is supposed to sign by your name, Greg.
That's one of the tens and those are. You're welcome.
Thanks for bringing that up, my identity.
Okay.
That's a wrap, your bank, they're wrapped around the funds.
That's a housing fee.
Okay, ten fifty. Caught us up, yeah. Uh, discuss, take action, ARPA fund request twenty-five each.
So, early on, in the, uh, very, very beginning of the ARPA committee, uh, one of the things that was set aside for ARPA funds was childcare, because it really, we talked about it at the ARPA meeting on Friday, that, you know, everybody wonders where the waitress is, and where all, all of our help, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that they don't have daycare, and daycare is so expensive, that if you were a waitress, or, you know, a job that's not paying twenty-five dollars an hour, your daycare's out cost, you're going to work, and so you stay home, and so then the restaurants had to close, there, there's places still today that just can't get enough help to stay open, so with the ARPA funds, it's a great use of those funds to help the, our, our county daycares, uh, take expense, some money on some things that they weren't able to do before. I know that Imagination Station, uh, is in need of some new, uh, outside, uh, uh, equipment. Um, Manella, I believe, is gonna finish there, instead of using the, the tires that get in the kids' shoes, and you have to dump it out, they have another product that's, you kind of pour it out, and it's soft, and it's, uh, and, uh, Little Hawks are, uh, under the sun, uh, they have a little bit of debt that's causing them to, that they have to pay, and so they believe they're just gonna use it for that. Then we also earmarked twenty-five thousand for the stables for JED, once that's up and running, that, you know, we do have till twenty-twenty-six, but it's earmarked in there, uh, that once they get their, their project going, we will have it down.
Let me ask you this.
Right.
If we put it in the general fund now, because it's, uh, under a loss revenue, then that's spent in a sense, so we might have longer than twenty-twenty-six, is that correct?
Possibly, I need to look at those rules and.
Yeah, that's kinda.
Well, the thing we talked about is, we're not sure exactly how much it's gonna cost to get public health moved into their building. Um, we're gonna start making some progress here real soon, uh, and, uh, just kinda, we still have some numbers that are moving around, but.
I would say, one thing that kinda caught me looking through their agenda today was the Imagination Station, because we didn't have any funding requests up until this morning.
We do, yeah.
Um, one thing I, I do feel like we have over the last twenty-some years, given them quite a bit of money. More than twenty, you know, we opened up a can of worms where, or I shouldn't say can of worms, but we opened up the door at Manella or Slash Wig, or if a charter gets one coming, that, hey, we won a twenty-eighty with the county, like Imagination Station does, that gets twelve grand a year.
Uh, we were involved in that from the ground up, you know, the. Uh, we were involved in that from the ground up, you know, the.
I have, you know, but they received a lot of money throughout the years.
Twenty years over.
You know, where these other ones are startups and we had some leftover money in the general fund that Charter Oak gets one going. There's, there's twenty-five thousand that can assist them in getting off the ground.
These are ARPA funds, special purpose, special, uh, and that would be, I mean, nothing says they can't, but. ARPA funds are ARPA funds and that's what we're using this month for, and when that's gone, it's gone. And so if it opens up a can of worms, we cross that bridge when. When we come to it. They didn't come to us in the beginning asking for a twenty-eight E to help them get started, so I think they had a. Uh, perform a plan of how it's gonna work in their communities, and according to all of them, they're, they're doing pretty good except for it's a little tight. And they don't wanna have to raise their, uh, uh, rates, because that's gonna leave some people out and that's gonna take our workforce down. So I really feel it's a great use for these funds and what comes down the road is, what comes down the road and we'll have to deal with it.
I, I'm kind of Dave's camp, you know, we already fund them every year, doing them out, uh, twelve thousand or something, I mean. This is the one-time payment that we're gonna give the other two and, uh, move forward. That's where I thought we were gonna go. I mean, the, the other one's been on our, in our budgeting process for twenty-plus years. That's my thought, so.
Well, they still have the same struggles, you know, uh, as to keep their, uh, prices down. It would certainly help to improve that facility and they've made the request and we have the money available. I think to exclude one of our county daycares, I, I don't know, I wouldn't be in favor of it, but.
We're, we're really not excluding them, because we just, we're going down to approve a budget. That's already got them in it, where the other two are not in that budget.
Where if you, and that's my point, if you approve this for all three today, are, are we gonna next year then approve? To have them in our budget every year?
This, this is.
We don't have ARPA funds every year for the twelve grand.
Right, well, that, that was twenty years ago and so.
Well, it's, you know, you say that all the time, just cause it was done and it was not done right, why?
We can't go back and take that money back.
No, but. We can say we're not.
We could say we don't wanna be in a twenty-eight E anymore, if we want, if we choose to do that, I guess. I never thought about it, but I am one that says.
But if we're able to shift those funds, you know, that twenty-five silver imagination stage, which we already support. Using our, what we just passed with our resolution into loss funds, it could technically go back into the general fund and possibly be used further down the road than twenty-six. For another town like Charter Oak to get a daycare center up and going, or a Dow City Yoda.
That West Side?
West Side, yeah.
That's on the agenda, so whatever we wanna do.
Just my initial, uh, my thoughts.
That's absolutely.
Was the money originally in the twenty-eight E between the city, school and county? Was that just to go towards the building? For building improvement?
That's, yeah, we were, we were helping pay off the building.
Yeah, and we're still doing.
That one's been paid, the bond's been paid off that we, uh, took out.
So it was building upkeep, right?
Now it's upkeep, because there's things, as you know with buildings, the, you know, roof and the, uh, we need to put a new freezer in. The boring was getting, uh, worn and worn and wear and tear, or many blinds were hanging off because kids are hard on things and. And there's just certain things you have to keep up with, um, and it's just, and that's the, that's the twenty-eight E agreement that, uh. Previous boards entered into and they withheld it, and if it's a change you guys wanna make, that's.
I think there was even in the past where we had gone above and beyond what the twenty-eight E to help offset some of those. Heating and cooling a roof cost, you know, so when they do have that, I mean, we've kicked in.
But in their defense, they've been the only Crawford County daycare that's been up and running. It's kept a lot of, uh, people that wouldn't have a place to take their kids, be able to be in that workforce. And so it's done what we originally set out to do and it's still doing it.
And we helped them.
Yeah, always, because the need.
Yeah, we've always been there for it.
The need has been out.
I'm not saying take that away.
Yeah.
No.
No.
No, I'm not for, I'm not for taking away the twenty-eight E, cause I think, you know, in particular, the, uh. Being able to keep affordable healthcare, you know, for our. Yeah, childcare, sorry, for our, for our lower, lower middle income and upper lower income people that are working. I mean, I, I think that that's probably the majority of the use there. I, I don't know for sure, but, but I think that that's very important to have in our. Industrial hub, let's call Dennis and what it is, our industrial hub, cause there's probably people that even bring kids there from our, our outlying towns, but. To fund that on a permanent level plus use these ARPA funds. I kinda see you guys' point, I mean, I really, actually do see you guys' point, and that's a very, a very legitimate. Point, I mean, we can't afford to fund how, uh, childcare across the entire county and, and in Little Hawks, then. They've done an amazing job down there. I mean, we've been part of that fundraising process for several years already.
Just had one.
And the Under the Sun folks, you know, I mean, their, 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 their church up there has done a great job towards it, I. And I, and, and I think they would like to maintain their independence, at least that's the, that's the feeling I get.
Correct.
And, uh, so, I mean, I don't know what any other, you know, you bring up Charter Oak, you know, I mean, there's, there's been some talk about different. Over there and childcare, but it's, I think everybody has the same trouble that, uh, all three of these have, finding the people to run them.
That's right.
And, uh, I don't know, I'm, 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 I'm kinda. I fall in the camp with Kyle and Dave a little bit on this one. I mean, as far as, you know, we're, we're gonna always be supporting Imagination Station. At least, that's my opinion. And, you know, these other ones, and I'd really, you know, if West Side wanted to fire one up, you know, or. Or, or Dow City or Charter Oak, you know, I mean, I think that if we had a little bit of extra revenue sitting there. You know, I mean, that's sure, uh, sure ain't gonna, and then like you brought up about, what's, what is it? The horse riding facility.
Stables for Jed.
Yeah, yeah, so if you, if we did, if we did, you know, if we're putting some money aside for that, assuming that gets going.
Right.
That's, 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 I, I just think that's really gonna be a good program, I saw.
Not knowing.
Yes, please.
Not knowing exactly, uh, how all the funds are gonna come together, cause this, this whole ARPA now in the general, uh, is new animal to all of us. If the motion was made to, uh, give Little Hawks and Under the Sun theirs now and keep money in. Are we gonna line item things out as we have them earmarked? Is that how?
You can do whatever you wanna do.
Can we?
I suppose, yep, we can.
So if the, uh, motion would be to set aside a hundred and twenty-five thousand, let's say, for. Uh, childcare in Crawford County upon request and need, uh, with already having, uh, Little Hawks and Under the Sun have been. They had their request in way early on.
Yep, they should.
Get them funded, uh, as soon as possible and then go, going forward, we have money for other projects and for things as they come. And have it set aside for childcare?
Yeah, I would say at least a hundred of that, maybe it would be a good idea.
Prove that as the request comes through.
Correct.
And approve as requests come in, is that what you said, Dave?
That's what she's getting at.
Okay.
I don't know if I like that idea or not.
I'm not a hundred percent on that. I would just like to move forward with, uh, with this. To, I'm, I'm in the camp of just approve, I'm gonna sign a little Hawks today and then move forward. What the future RIGBRI is, but. I'd like to hear your opinion.
I guess, as far as having a fund where people can request to get money out of there, I guess, then you have to put so many stipulations on it. As to a dollar amount, cause somebody might request twenty-five thousand and then you give a grant them the twenty-five thousand. Somebody else comes and says, well, we don't have twenty-five thousand left in there, yes, you can only do fifteen, cause there's only fifteen left in there, well. So it just seems like that if you're gonna make the commitment, that you make the commitment that if we're gonna fund Imagination Station by twelve thousand dollars a year. Then we're gonna, every childcare that starts, we're gonna do the exact same thing for you. I mean, that's the only way you can be fair. If that's what you're trying to be, is fair. Um, and giving each of them twenty-five thousand against the ARPA money, to me, that's fair. Even though you're giving one money through a twenty-eight E, that this is something different, so I can understand the twenty-five thousand each.
So you're drawing a.
Through the ARPA funds.
Yes.
But I think Dave and Kyle make a good point moving forward, that I think you have to decide that if, if childcare is important in Crawford County. Then we need to be helping them out. We need to make sure that they're, uh, functioning. And, uh, if our citizens say that we need childcare, so I can. Do the work, so I can get out there, then we need, I mean, it'd be nice as a taxpayer that you can finally see. What your taxes are doing, and that's one thing that you could see, that is.
One stipulation, affordable qual- uh, quality childcare. Now, there's childcare out there, but you want it to be affordable and quality. It has to have standards and oversight and hours that can't be changed, cause that used to be the problem within home daycare. You have a, you have to go to work the next day and your daycare provider called up and said, I'm gonna go to the city, my husband has a day off, so if I have some place to take your kid. So, can't come to work today, I have no daycare. So that gives them that steady, you know, uh, stream of everything, everybody's equal. You're not just going to somebody's home and playing with their kids' toys and, oh, you can't play with that, that's little Johnny's, got it for his birthday, you know, um. I just think it's, it's so necessary and really and truly it's been proven that that's why a lot of people cannot work, because they cannot afford childcare. And when you have to get good quality people, you have to pay them a decent wage, uh, and, and have good toys and food. And all of the things that go in with it, so.
Which I agree, I mean, everything you said is correct, and, and Dennis has seen that benefit through the Imagination Station and being. Supported by the school and the city, Dennis and the county board of supervisors of the county. And that is my point, as you said, we have supported them and Dennis reap the benefits and now we're seeing up and coming Manila or Slash Wig. And potentially others where it's time to help them off the ground.
And they have, I think, uh, uh, I can't get, get the two mixed up. I think down in Manila, they have a waiting list, is that possible, that they start out with twelve kids and now they have seventy?
They're just like seventy kids.
Seventy kids, yeah, um, and, and because of having enough people, just, you're required in different age groups. To have X amount of people in each room, you can't, you know, if they're under three, you have like two for each child and. It's not as easy as just, yeah, oh, sure, bring them in, you gotta make sure you have that staff available and, uh.
I think our state has made it a requirement.
Right, 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 right.
Governor stepped up and fiery of hers.
Yeah, why?
Because if you don't have anybody to watch your children.
Go ahead, I mean, it's unfortunate that, you know, Little Tikes or Little Hawks and Under the Sun. Uh, and they're fairly new. We don't know what their future needs are gonna be, but as you stated in your opening statement, that. There's repairs that need to be made down here, and at some point in time, it is. I think if every, every facet of government is gonna have to accept the, at what point do we? But we can't continue just to subsidize, I, 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 it's important to subsidize, but at what point in time does, does. Employers should be subsidizing that, shouldn't, I mean, they're short, they're, they're looking for help. And people say they can't, employees, cause they can't find childcare, shouldn't they be subsidizing that? Instead of taxpayers subsidizing it? And then we're kinda.
When is it off?
At what point in time is, is. The, the cost is probably gonna, needs to go up to have daycare, then again, just to catch twenty-two all the time.
Right.
It'll never.
Yeah.
That's where I've already, we're paying them, whatever, do we have to update, do we need to review that twenty-eight E agreement? They're already on, I don't wanna say payroll, but, you know, they're, they're there, that's still where I'm at. You know, as arguments, who gets the, the, that really don't matter, cause we're working at two other communities, so. I mean, that arguments, I'm just, I just find it hard to continue to. Maybe play winners or pick winners, I don't know, we're picking winners or losers, but we're kinda weighing the balance out more if we, I think. If we, you have the imagination.
Those, those two smaller communities saw the need and, uh, very, uh, with Manila getting that building given to them. They went forward and did what they needed to do to make that happen, and that is absolutely amazing. And they're still having fundraisers to, to keep it going, everybody's supporting it. Plus we had, you know, somebody, uh, endowed, they have some money, there's an endowment, and so they saw that need, they went forward and it's just. Uh, they're getting more kids and more calls all the time. Uh, the reason that I see the difference is these funds. Originally in the ARPA documents, childcare was one of, I think, the second thing on there that the ARPA funds could be used for. So it still goes back to that same mission of what it's there for and.
Might still be using it for that.
Yeah, we have been, don't, yeah, but I just.
Do they have fundraisers down here?
No. So, you know, uh, whatever you guys think, majority will rule on this, so whatever you guys wanna do.
You know what? Here again, I don't. I mean, they should start having fundraisers too, I mean, it's, I hate to say it, but it seems like it's successful with the other two communities.
Well, I, I'm not on that board anymore, but, uh, whatever.
And Dave.
You and Dave might need to bring that up and, and, and talk about it.
Well, yeah, anyway.
Oh, is it today?
For the moment, I guess, uh. I would make a, uh, just to keep the thing moving, I would make a motion to approve twenty-five thousand dollars for Little Hawks. And twenty-five thousand dollars for Under the Sun childcare to spend our ARPA funds.
Second.
And moved and seconded to, uh, spend twenty-five thousand on each Little Hawks and Under the Sun.
Any further discussion? So you're not including Imagination Station?
No, correct, that's correct.
Okay.
You, you. Then I, I will not be supporting it, I guess.
And see, that's kind of where, I definitely want the money to go to Little Hawks and Under the Sun, but I'd like to have Imagination Station, so. When I vote against it, it's not that I'm against giving it to Little Hawks and Under the Sun, I just wanna, I wanted it to be for all of it. So, but the majority will rule, so call the question.
Okay, question's been called.
We're explaining, I hear you, I might just explain myself, that the reasoning is because we're already funding Imagination Station yearly on a budget.
Okay.
And most, of whatever ARPA funds aren't used, go back to the loss revenue resolution we just passed, to potentially. Help out other daycares down the road, or other needs as arise with daycares.
Yeah. Okay, and I, and I, I'm, I'm kinda in the camp with, with the, uh, Little Hawks and the Under the Sun. And because we have faithfully funded the Imagination Station and I don't, I don't. At least in my side, that, that's not gonna change. I think that, uh, you know. We have to be judicious with our funding, you know, I mean, and, and we, we really worked hard this year on our budgeting. And, uh, I think that just like, you know, restricting pay raises and all that kinda stuff, you know, that's, that. It, it kinda falls in that same thing in my mindset then with the Imagination Station, you know, I mean. We, we, we do faithfully budget them, and I mean, you think about how much they get every year from government entities, you know, other than just us. So I think that they're, they're well helped, helped, and we helped them quite a bit. And, 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 and with additional monies like Kyle's brought up before, when they had a roof emergency and stuff, and you know, I mean, those types of things, we do, we do help that out. So, that's my opinion on it too, I'm gonna call the question then, so.
Can you roll call?
We. You can call for a roll call, yes.
We vote no, I wouldn't want it to, to not be able to fund Little Hawks and Under the Sun. So how does one, uh, do that?
Well, the motion, we just vote on the motion, the motion.
The motion has to fund them too.
To fund the two and.
It's not saying you're not, you're, you're.
Okay, cause we're not exactly taking what's there, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, but the mo- that's just the, the suggestion, the motion's actually gotta be made by one of the. Or. Okay, go ahead.
If imagination came in with the specific thing that they needed, since this is the ARPA funds that was set aside. I give Imagination Station the credit for being up and running for the last twenty years, fulfilling a need in this community. And the, this is an extra little help we could give them, because there, things are getting older. You, you cannot believe the amount of kids that have come and gone through that Imagination Station, and I do wonder what Crawford County and our packing plants would have done. Without that, and I just feel like this is our opportunity to help give them that little boost, uh, and to leave them out. But I understand the motion and, uh, I think I'm gonna get it right.
So, I called. So I called a question, roll call requested.
Roll call's been requested, uh, Mr. Schultz?
I'm in favor of that.
You're now vote aye. Mr. Dozar?
Oppose.
Nay. Ms. Hayden?
I vote in favor, cause I wanna make sure that Little Hawks and, uh, Under the Sun.
So you're voting aye?
Yes.
Okay, that's correct.
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye. Motion carries. And you know, if, if you did bring that into, to another time, to, before the board, you know, we'd have to discuss it again then.
Right.
Okay?
My best.
Okay, sounds good. I don't think this was a lack of support for daycare, I think it was trying to show us support for our budget. That's what I, I think it was, okay, thank you. Next, you wanna get this checked off here, okay. Now, this is a discuss, take action, Unisystem Voting Solutions Incorporated by Henry and Atkins and Sons, Inc., software license agreement. I'm gonna guess, miss, madam auditor, you are our advisory on this or?
Yeah, it's, so this first part is the, um, software license agreement. Um, for the, it includes our existing firmware and software for elections. And it includes the new purchased, which is online for next, the actual purchase.
Purchase agreement?
This is the software agreement, um.
So this isn't a book, this isn't approving funding, this is just approving the agreement?
This is approved purchase.
Right.
Software license agreement, right?
Purchase agreement's next. This is the ten fifty five. That's why I'm checking box here. Uh, so this is basically just an approval, so would you, what, you're basically going off your recommendation on this is, this is your department, I could read it a hundred times and still not know for sure what you need.
It's what we've been.
Right, this is what, yeah, and we're just, we're adding more, um, FPTs, Freedom Vote tablets.
Yep.
To the.
That's the computer thing, correct?
I'm trying to find where it says the.
So I would make a motion to approve.
Can't find the timeline.
Unisystem Voting Solutions, uh, in software license agreement.
Okay, I have a motion on the tip floor.
We can't have voting without it.
Yeah, kinda need it. Uh, then this is basically to en- enhance it to cover all of your new tablets.
Yes.
Okay, so did you second? Okay, Mr. Schultz seconds. Ms. Hayden made the motion and Mr. Schultz seconds. Okay, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye. Motion carries.
This is the next, next one is the, we already agreed, told you to, so I'd make that motion to purchase the fifteen open electric Freedom Vote stable ballot marketing devices.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Schultz.
Second.
And second by Mr. Mulbauer. Any further discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye. Motion carries. Checking them off quicker. Uh, discuss, take action, Amy Piper, please come forward, schedule wellness clinic.
Yeah, so June twentieth and twenty-first, six AM, eight AM. Um, just wanna make sure that it's okay to do, uh.
Six AM to eight AM.
Six AM, six AM to eight AM.
Each day.
Yes. Um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure at the, at the hospital. Yeah, they just had the March ones, but she didn't let me know about it until the day they already had it up. And I was like, by the time I got in here for approval and get it out to the employees, it was gonna be too late because those, those happened real quick. So my plan is.
Never enough spots for the, the demand.
Right, and so.
I go all the time.
She is, um, they'll have the sign up for the June one starting in April, the middle of April. So I wanna get the information out on the April thirteenth checks and just wanna make sure that that's okay, that I do that.
I'll make the motion that we schedule the wellness clinic for June twentieth and twenty-first from six AM to eight AM each day.
Motion's been made by Ms. Hayden.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dozar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Amy, appreciate it. Thank you for looking after the health of our folks.
As long as you get there.
Did I, I didn't sign where the, she's got a tag for me. Authorized signature, I'm gonna guess she's got the arrow right there. Okay, discuss, take action, time, date and location for the public hearing for the budget twenty twenty-three, that was fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Drag our feet until he gets back. Budget hearing.
You have any dates in mind? Yes, April eighteenth.
April eighteenth.
Yep, allows us, um, from March twenty-nine through April eighth to get the publication.
Yep.
In our three papers, okay. So discuss it with Chuck and.
And.
Yeah, we work for.
Do it at ten o'clock or?
Please.
What time you wanna, what?
You all say the time, you know.
What time do we typically do that, the beginning or the end?
Uh, we usually do it at like ten AM.
Ten AM, that's what I thought, so. Ten AM on the eight.
Eighteenth of April.
Eighteenth of April during our meeting. Let's see, time is, I'm trying to talk.
We're thinking about the eighteenth stuff. I like the eighteen.
Ten AM, ten AM.
Boardroom.
I'm right here. Who made that motion?
I'll second.
Who made it?
Craig did.
I did.
Craig made the motion, uh, Mr. Dozar makes the motion, Ms. Hayden seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, and all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye. There, we're back on track. Discuss, take action, Chris Nelson, Greta Wall, Bell, June, approval of the audit. Did I say it wrong?
That's okay. Yeah. He brought tart feathers on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am, got it?
Thank you.
It's a rather thick report, uh, obviously we'll just touch on, uh, the highlights. If anybody has any questions as we go through, please go for it.
I like my highlights.
Okay, uh, so if we turn in a couple of pages, uh, the independent auditors report, this is, uh, the only thing in the report that's ours as the auditors. Um, and this is standard wording for unmodified opinions on your financial statements, that's what you're after. Um, it looks a little different than prior years, the, you know, the powers that be said, uh, that other report's been in play too long, we gotta change it, so. Uh, basically says the same thing, um, paragraphs are in different order, the opinions for the front of the report instead of the back. But again, uh, standard wording for unmodified opinions. Uh, so that report goes about three pages, following it is management discussion and analysis. Pages three through three G, uh, this is required by government audit standards to be included. It's a report from you, two readers of your financial statements, uh, gives them information about your financial statements more in a narrative form. Um, what I'd like to do is turn past that to the first, uh, set of financial statements, the bottom left will be page four. And this is exhibit A, so there are three sets of financial statements that are required as part of your audit report. Um, this is the first set, uh, these are full accrual basis financial statements. So even though you budget on a cash basis, you maintain your records and books throughout the year on a cash basis. Uh, your audited financial statements are done on an accrual basis and a modified accrual basis. So, um, not really comparative necessarily to what you see on an ongoing, uh, monthly basis. So, um, this is the first set, includes all funds of the, of the county, includes your internal service fund, um, all combined. And again, full accrual, so that means, uh, it includes your capital assets, includes long-term debt, the pension accounting rules, all your receivables and payables. Uh, so starting on the left-hand side, just to touch on a few of the larger items, your total assets in the middle of the page, seventy-five million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, your cash is about fourteen, uh, million, five hundred thousand. Uh, succeeding your property taxes moving down nine point nine million. Um, this is property taxes that you have levied, uh, so they are receivable, but they will be collected next year. Inventory is at the end of the year about four point three million. Capital assets, uh, for all your infrastructure buildings, uh, net of, with a strong net of accumulated depreciation at forty-four million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then the last item under net total assets is net pension asset. At the end of the year, again, this is based on the pension accounting, uh, rules, based on a year ago information, that's based on June thirty, twenty-one. Uh, the IFRS program, uh, was actually overfunded. Uh, last year you had a four point nine million dollar, uh, liability in your financial statements for your share of their unfunded portion. But if you remember back, uh, that far, June thirty of twenty-one, the markets were really good. Investment income was high, investment values were high, the IFRS fund itself was fully funded. Um, and so it's going to change, you know, every year. Thinking back to June thirty, twenty-two, markets weren't so good, you know? It's gonna flip flop back to showing a liability. Really, this is just for disclosure purposes, um, it just kind of gives readers of your financial statements, uh, that information. You know, it's not an asset that you're gonna collect, uh, when it shows as a liability, it's not a liability that you're gonna pay. Uh, you just fund, uh, the IFRS program based on the, the contribution requirements. Uh, moving down to liabilities, uh, under revenues of one point five million, these are your ARPA funds. Um, and then also included then under long-term liabilities is your general obligation bonds. You have about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars outstanding as of the end of June thirty, twenty-two. A hundred and forty thousand of that, uh, is being paid during fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, deferred inflows of resources, the largest item there, unavailable property taxes equals the receivable above. Uh, the property tax that you levy, um, is not collectible to the next year. Under government accounting rules, it's not recognized as revenue until the year it's collected. Kind of a unique rule, uh, for governmental entities. On the right-hand side is your net position at fifty-eight million dollars. Overall, the, the county continues to have a good financial position. Exhibit B is the full accrual, uh, income statement, uh, all funds of the county. It includes depreciation expense, it includes your activity of the farm-to-market funds that don't actually flow through, uh, your books. Um, capital purchases are capitalized as part of capital assets, uh, and debt payments are not recorded as an expenditure. So expenses, looking at the left-hand side, were a little over fifteen million dollars. Moving from left to right are program revenues that you received or earned for providing various services and, uh, programs specific for those expenses. Charges for services are one point nine million, the operating revenues were a little over six million, most of that being road use funds. Um, and then the capital at six million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh, this is all farm-to-market money uh, for projects that you had during the year. That gets us to the negative one million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars on the right-hand column, which are expenditures or expenses that you incurred during the year that weren't paid for with programs specific revenues. Um, so those are paid for with general revenues, property taxes, local option sales tax and so forth. Uh, your general revenues were eleven point one million. Overall, you had an increase in your net position on an accrual basis of nine point nine million. Uh, moving to the next financial statement on exhibit C, uh, this is, starts the second set, they're modified accrual basis financial statement shown by major fund. There are four major funds of the county this past fiscal year, the general fund, rural services, secondary roads and the ARPA fund. Uh, some of the differences between, uh, this is, uh, no capital assets, no long-term debt, no pension accounting. Um, this, this set of financial statements does not include the internal service fund. So looking at the right-hand side, your assets for your governmental funds totaled twenty-eight million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. About half of that is in your general fund, a little over fourteen million. Cash is at thirteen million, again, the succeeding your property tax revenues on the right at nine point nine million and the inventories. Uh, liabilities were just over three million dollars, about half of that is ARPA funds. Until those are spent for the purpose, uh, that they were provided to you, they can, they're considered to be an unearned revenue. Um, and so it shows up here as a liability. And it's continued on the next page to show you where your fund balances are for the major funds. A total fund balance at the end of the year for the county was fifteen million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand. For your major funds, your general fund has about half of that at seven point five million dollars. Rural services at five hundred and three thousand, secondary roads at six million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, all of those being in, in a very good financial position at the end of the, end of the year. Exhibit D, page nine, uh, kind of what I was explaining, uh, puts numbers to some of the, the changes or differences between the two sets of financial statements, uh, the top line, the fifteen million of fund balance that we just saw on the previous page and some of the differences such as capital and the pension accounting and long-term debt, uh, getting us to the net position at the bottom under the full accrual of fifty-eight million, sixty-six thousand. Page ten, exhibit E is the modified accrual basis income statement by major fund. Uh, this does not include depreciation, but capital purchases are an expenditure. Uh, no farm-to-market money, revenue or expense, uh, no pension accounting, debt payments are an expenditure and this does not include the internal service fund. Looking at the right-hand side, your total revenues, uh, for your governmental funds were eighteen million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, this is property taxes, local option sales tax, road use tax and so forth. Uh, about eight point seven million of that is in the general fund, rural services had three point four million and secondary roads at five point eight million. Your expenditures during the year in total were sixteen million point, sixteen million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand. Uh, again, about half of that is in your general fund, a little over eight million. Rural services at about one point one million and secondary roads at six point four. This is continued then on the next page to show other financial sources and uses, primarily transfers between funds. Um, as well as sale of capital assets is here, uh, a positive one hundred and six thousand dollars in total. Um, gets us to the change in fund balances on the modified accrual basis of two point two million. Uh, you can see the general fund had an increase of four hundred thousand, rural services a decrease of ninety-two thousand and secondary roads an increase of two point one million. Okay, a lot of numbers, I know, last set of financial statements. Uh, I guess exhibit F is the, uh, the reconciliation between the modified accrual and full accrual net incomes. Uh, they call them something, again, the differences are primarily capital and the pension accounting. On page thirteen is the, the beginning of the third set of financial statements, this is your internal service fund. Uh, this is the fund that's used to account for, uh, the money you've set aside for health insurance, a health insurance plan. Um, that's been working out, uh, well for the county. Um, at the end of the year, uh, your cash was at one million, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You had accounts payable or liabilities of about two hundred and nine thousand dollars from claims that were incurred, but had not been paid yet as of June thirty. And so your net position or equity, um, amounts reserved for employee health of million, two hundred and sixty thousand.
Chris, on that number, I mean, we kind of always watch that, or pull, usually at least a million is kind of when you start to feel like you're getting into that. Where, you know, a million, two million, five, you feel healthy, but you start to drop too much.
Yeah, I, you know, you, if you look on the next page, you're occurring about one. Yeah, I, you know, you, if you look on the next page, you're occurring about one point six million dollars of expenses, you know, every year. Um, of that, this past year, three hundred thousand was um provided by employees and, and others. Um, into that plan. So, you know, your share basically is about one point four million. Uh, this past, uh, you funded about one point two, so it declined about two hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think your net position at the one point two is pretty good. Um, you know, that's more than a year's worth of, on average, claims, you know? So I think that's a reasonable um, a balance to, to try to maintain million, million two. You know, you get below that, um, you know, you have a bad year, um, then it's gonna come back to the county to fund that. Um, and that does and can happen. Um, so I don't think by any means your one point two is excessive. Um, because those bad claim years can happen. So, kind of that answered your question.
Yep, sure, Gary.
Um, on page fourteen, uh, again, the internal service fund, we just, we're talking about it. Total revenues a million five. Uh, you had one point six, almost one point seven million dollars of, of expenses between claims. Insurance for reinsurance, premiums and administrative fees. Um, overall, you had a net loss within this fund of a hundred and seventy thousand. And this being a full accrual proprietary fund required to have a saving cash flows on page fifteen. And it basically says the same things. You had net use of cash of sixty-four thousand dollars, kinda goes along with the net loss. For your plan. And the last two pages there, sixteen and seventeen, uh, of numbers, these are custodial funds. Uh, you collect taxes and remit taxes to a lot of other entities uh within the county. Uh, on the left-hand page shows uh assets that you're holding on behalf of others. Um, and page seventeen shows the activity of uh collections that you had during the years. Was what was remitted and held at the end of the year. So those are not necessarily uh the county's funds. Following the financial statements and all the numbers are standard footnote disclosures and supplementary information. There isn't anything new in the information to point out. It's just normal information of, of, of accounting policies that you follow. Gives it uh additional information for readers of your financial statements. I'm gonna turn back to the very last pages. Pages sixty-one and sixty-two, um, as part of being a governmental entity. Uh, we're required to report on internal controls and compliance. Uh, that report is actually on page fifty-nine and sixty. Um, but basically, uh, sixty-one and sixty-two are the results of our findings. Um, and as it shows, uh, under part one on the top page sixty-one. We had no internal control deficiencies noted or no not uh instances of non-compliance. Um, part two, which starts kind of in the middle there on page sixty-one and carries over to the next page. There are ten items listed here. They're required statutory reporting items that the state auditor's office requires that we look at. Um, and comment on. All of them are positive comments. We did not find any issues. Uh, that warranted written uh comments, so the audit went well.
Well, for this.
Large section, not large, but sizable sections of it, you know, in, in, in CDs or whatever. I mean.
That'd be acceptable practice.
That would be an acceptable practice.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, you can. Um, again, it really depends on, you know, looking forward and what money is needed.
Exactly.
Because you're kinda tying it up a little bit, not that you can't get it out for certificate of deposit. Um, but there are s- uh, specific rules that you have to follow or limits, I should say, on what is allowed for uh investment.
Yep.
Um, CDs are probably, you know, most um conservative, but safe. Um, and typically, um, most common, I should say. You know, I mean, you have the option of doing a lot of different things within the code.
And you look at interest rates being up and CDs paying four to five percent for a year CD. And I know there's some flex plans too that allow you to maybe be close to that four percent that you can withdraw anytime.
Absolutely. And I think that's, you know, prudent, you know, in, in your position to invest some of that to get, get some income off that. You know, depending on what you're getting in your main checking account or high-fi accounters and so forth.
Well, we're just looking as, as we are the potential to have less tax revenue.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, we've, I wouldn't say we have a sizable mistake. I mean, it's always available for a reason. But if that'd be a way to, in the future, to help generate some income, to help pay the bills.
Absolutely.
That was, that, we wanna make sure that, you know, that's my question.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. I know this very quick review, a lot of numbers, but again, uh, overall, you know, the audit went well.
So you, do you, how many counties do you audit?
Five.
Five. So do you see much difference amongst the counties or, or they all run? Financially, basically the same.
No, 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 there, there are differences. Um, you know, you typically have very little debt. Uh, you're probably in a stronger position than any of the others that we do, um, as far as auditing. So, no, they're all in the same struggles and things, but, uh, you know, make up that the counties are all different. And, you know, I mean, just a number of bridges and roads you gotta maintain in miles compared to some of the others are different, you know? And so everybody has some differences, but um, no, you're, I would say you're in one of the stronger positions of.
Good to know.
Obviously.
Good job, team. And things before us.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, sir. Certainly appreciate it.
Always nice for you to come and give us the.
A good report. Okay, well, thank you.
Lot of information.
Yep, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming up. Okay, and next on the agenda. More like the uh eleven oh five. Oh yeah, sorry. Eleven fifteen, discuss take action, the city center remodel.
Well, I'll take the first part of it. Um, for Colin, because of the um mold and all that was going on down in the basement because of the water break. We just needed to get that taken care of. So I did uh go about getting three bids. Now, my third bid was not able to go take a look at it and wasn't gonna have time to do it right away. So I took two bids and the lowest bid was um with this uh level line contracting. They went, they made a little drawing of what they all planned to do for their bid. And I used this drawing for the other two, so that they would all be working off of the same. I just did like that. So they'd all know exactly what the expectations of what we're gonna do. I did have a roll-off put down there that's gonna be at the county's expense and it's almost full. And so I did go back in there after they sent me a little memo that they were done. And they, they did everything as far as I could tell, I, I didn't like check the list, but um, everything that was on this list was done. And they took.
They've already gone through.
They're, they're done, they're done. And that was their bid thirty-four, twenty-four, which I did not think was bad. My next lowest bid was four thousand five hundred dollars. So I really felt that we did the, and they got it done on Monday. They were there at seven o'clock in the morning, I met them to unlock the door, and then they called me, I think it was about five, they were done. And I did not go in while they were still there, but I did go in to lock it back up and just kinda looked around. It looks a hundred percent better. It doesn't smell as bad. So if you wanna go walk through it, but it really, um, they cut the drywall twenty-four inches up all the way around. Took all of the paneling out of the, what's going to be the IT room, took, made that closet. You can see the studs in those rooms, took out all of the cabinets, uh, that receptionist desk that was, you know, mold about up to here. Took that, it's gone.
Took out that center wall?
Not, not the center wall, nope.
It was still there?
It was not part of the, the cleanup, so.
It's just part of the panel, that's the paneling, they took the paneling off.
Paneling off, yes. They, anything that showed any mold, you know, if it was over and above this, you know, once they got into it. Uh, they were gonna give me a call and see if they could, but everything just kinda went to where they were at and uh, I feel happy with it. And it, I think it's, it actually now, you know, if we could start doing anything else, we're, we're done with that noisy. Beating stuff down and taking uh concrete out or uh paneling and wet carpet and uh.
Probably be a little noise yet, though. We're building especially the IT room, won't that?
The IT room, so that, that room is empty. I mean, we could, cause I did talk to Cory, I just happened to run into him. And he's anxious to kinda get, he does not wanna order things because his warranties start as soon as he orders them.
Sure.
But that would be a great place to kinda, that RFP is already out there. Um, he's not necessarily a hundred percent agreement. What now?
Was there a water line in there?
Water line or something needed to be moved over the IT room?
I think so, I don't know.
But I think that was the whole of it last time, there was a water line, I was gonna question that needed to be moved.
Yeah, there's some construction stuff in the other RFP that directly affects the IT room.
Yeah, that's what I.
Alright, so here's Jakes. So here.
Yeah, the water is off, alright. Could be a problem getting water to the bathroom.
We're about uh some other day, that's yours. I mean, really, to be honest with you.
The other, I, the other RFP.
This, this, everything that's in here is at fifty-one thousand.
That's IT.
That's IT, so that is.
But there is some construction stuff that was part of the original RFP.
Got it.
That affects the IT room.
You're, you're.
Yep, pretty sure.
Never got a hole in the mason area or plumber did.
Should be easier to actually.
This is, cause actually all of this is done, all of the, the, these things are actually not in the dumpster because you can't take them to recycle. Or to the dumpster, so those are sitting there, hopefully you can take them to showers or whatever. Um, but uh, the steel door, you know, there's no door on that now, so that door is gone, cause it had the, the mold on it. Um, I just, the reason that this needs to get back on the agenda as an item for action. Is I just feel like we, we need to put, now that we've gone through it with the public health. I, I really, trying to correct me at any one time, would like. I would like to take the chairman of the uh public health board. Doug Sausman, you know, so we're all in agreement, cause remember when we all went through, there were things that, you know, I was not, I was over with this group and they were talking about the, the sinks. I think everybody that's gone through there wonders why we'd wanna take sinks out of a uh medical facility when.
We're in Washington, vital.
Right, part of the reason that we have these funds is in case another pandemic came, what, what could our county do better? And one of them was to have a more uh efficient public health building. I believe sinks in those offices. If you, let's just say the offices that are gonna be used for public health, and I will qualify all this by saying I do not work there, I don't walk in their shoes. I, but I can just imagine if you've been out in a home and you come back, one of the first things you're probably gonna wanna do is wash your hands. And kind of, you know, if you have any toys with you that you can wash them, and I just, they don't take up that much room. Everybody that goes through uh realizes that when you take those out. Now that some of them, the carpet looks like it's gonna be okay, but the, the uh, little trimmer on the outside is broken up. We won't be able to match it, so now we've gotten into where we're gonna have to take all of that out, just because we took the sink out. Gonna have to have a plumber go in there and, and, you know, cap off the water, gonna have some drywall uh. And that just seems to add to the cost when the question really is, is it really, was it just something that you thought you wanted out? Or is it absolutely?
You're on the, the second.
Upstairs, upstairs. So that first level that, when you first walk in, the, the rooms that are gonna actually be used for um patients. Observation rooms and uh immunizations will keep the, the um sinks in there. That back office uh where, where the, it's the whole counter that has the sinks and they want all of that out of there. I would still question, couldn't we use those drawers? Cause that's where that, really the rehabilitation money starts, starts adding up, taking out the cupboards. Now we have to worry about what we're gonna do for the floor underneath it. Once again, we're gonna be capping off uh plumbing, drywall. And all it is is storage, so anything that you're gonna use that for, you know, whether it be an office or.
People saying so, we can't plumbing in the cabinet, we put in a countertop now. Relatively cheap, I would say. It's like I said, you pull them out, you got flooring and.
Right.
Drywall issues and trim issues.
Trim issues. Um, so I, I would like to take this RFP and go through. Uh, with a qualified person that has been a uh subcontractor before. To kind of give us the, their opinion, or it's more than opinion, because they have a working knowledge of it. The things that are doable, the things that, that he would recommend we not change to keep it moving. Um, Jared Mobar has, has said he would go through it with us. Um, just to kind of give the expert opinion of, of what is a need, what is a want. Just so we can get a good RFP that uh, a, a general contractor would normally be looking at. That kinda lays it out, cause there's, there's a little bit of gray in here for some people to give that good bid and get that RFP out as soon as possible. I still think that we should tap into um our registered contractors. So that everybody has an opportunity to come in and look at what we have out there. Uh, the basement. Uh, that's where the real issue comes in of what, how much work we wanna do with the ARPA funds down in the basement. You know, now that it's cleaned up, you, you can visualize a little bit more. Um, if, what walls you wanna have taken out and, and exactly what's the purpose gonna be? Or the, the two smaller offices, the office next to Jakes. Is it okay to just plan that to be a place to store things and just put down a new floor and finish out the drywall? Um, windows do need to be, uh, the trim is okay, the windows are okay from, if three different people kind of look at them with their opinions only. Not any, they're gonna do a bid, that there, there's some wood that needs to be replaced, but the whole windows don't need to be done. I've had uh two, what I consider qualified people say that.
So what I'm hearing is you'd like to re- summarize what you, you'd like to walk back through with Doug in the general. To kinda get a better idea of what fine-tune.
And maybe.
The plan.
Yep, yep.
And can, or will.
Fine-tune it.
Fine-tune it and get an estimate, so we have an idea going forward.
Absolutely.
Funds would cost us.
Absolutely.
Putting it back out on our.
Yep, cause you know, we were gonna set aside a hundred and fifty thousand. And uh, is that realistic? And if that's the dollar amount that we want to use, we need to then say, well, if for that dollar amount, we can't have this. But you know, I just think that it's our building, box of the county, we need to take this in our control and keep it going. We have been patient, we have been.
Do you really, do you need an action taken, or do you just need consensus from us to go through and do that?
Well, I think everybody needs to know, you know.
I know, no, that's good, but you got, you just need consensus from all of us.
Feel like it needs to stay on the agenda until we actually have a ribbon cutting, you know, I just, uh, not, not.
No argument. I think you got our consensus.
Okay.
So your those are, okay. I think we had a whole trip with the original one we bought it, but they take metal all.
Yes.
And you can fine-tune that and get, come back with an estimate of what it would be.
We're gonna do needs and wants, and we're gonna figure out, you know, cause I can figure out what it would be.
I like that you're gonna split, separate that needs versus wants.
Right.
So the things we have to have versus the things we'd like to have.
We want it to be a nice place, uh, building that we're proud of and that our uh public health clients are, you know, feel honored to be in there. So I just wanna keep it moving and uh, keep it.
Is he gonna give us a invoice for this?
I believe that that could work as one, but I could ask.
Well, it says job quote on it.
Yeah, but I can.
It'd be nice if. What do we write in that, true?
Didn't say quote?
What was paying that out of? That clean up.
ARPAs.
Probably our.
Yeah, cause that wasn't insurable. Say, and this came in this morning. Say, and this came in this morning, so I, I don't, I don't know if we need to have it on next, well, just do it next week if we have to have it on the agenda. But this is the, the cost for the struck, the shelters over there at Cedar Rapids, thirty-five, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. So just, just short of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
For what shelters?
That, the, the communication shelters.
The shelters or the towers?
No, this is, oh.
Those are towers.
This is towers, sorry, sorry.
I was going to say, you got another three hundred and fifty dollars?
No, no.
Bill this morning?
Sorry, I'm, I'm straight, thanks, thanks. Uh, yeah, no, this is the finish, this, and this is the, I believe how Greg said it, this was the final price on the tower, correct?
Yeah, the, the remaining.
The remainder, the remainers needed to be paid. And then this is ARPA fund, so do we need to have this on the agenda or?
No, we can just.
Well, hand it off to the.
Mr. Greg.
Mr. Chair. I do have a question. I appreciate what you're doing. I like that to give back to keep that moving. But back to what we talked about with Chris on some of our fund balances and maybe utilizing some higher interest rate CDs. When is appropriate time? And I'm asking that we would have that discussion or have it on, is it after our agendas? Or, I mean, after our budget is certified, is it as we budget? But when, when do we start having that conversation to, we wanted to roll some?
Well, the cat's out of the bag, right? I mean, the press is here, so there's no time like the present.
Well.
We're only missing out on interest rates.
You'd need to, need something on the agenda so the public's aware of your conversation.
Right.
And that's why I'm bringing all my mask in, that's all.
Like we're, we're.
Then we should have it on the agenda for next week to talk about, you know, where, where our best investment. And, but we also have to wait for the ones that are in locked, you know, you have a three-year CD with a bank and it's not due. It's, I don't think, you guys have it that you don't get the penalty for early withdrawal on your.
Were you asking, I don't do CDs. I'm not the trash. It's nice to hear from Chris. I do almost everything else. That is general practice. And you see other entities use that as a benefit to, you know, have their fund balance.
Absolutely. And that's why, you know, special interest rates to public funds. I think that at one point in time, there was, you know, a bank that wasn't going to waive the early withdrawal. And another bank was, and so, but the reason that the higher, we had the higher interest is because they'll stay there for the whole time and you're not, you know, so.
Pretty bright. You look back at, you know, Chuck has that form that shows your yearly increase of what our expenses are. I think in thirty years ago, they would have started a CD, you had a million and kept it going. How much interest the county would have drawn over the last, how many years?
Yeah.
That, that, I think that's probably a good idea for going forward, so let's.
Sure, give us a list of where all of our funds are, what they're making.
Smart deal.
I think it could just further strengthen our position, position as a county going forward, especially not knowing what our revenues are going to be.
Yeah.
And you heard Chris today, I mean, we're one of the healthier counties with the budget that, you know, because of the sacrifices and the, the, what we've done with budgeting and not putting ourselves in a position where you live year to year.
Yeah. Well, I think the passports and then I think what we're doing now are, are benefit, you know, it's benefit, we're, we're the beneficiaries of it. So we should just keep doing responsible things going forward, I think.
Million bucks, four percent, that's forty grand.
It's not chump change in my book.
And if you don't draw on it.
We can fish four pop balls out of my face. Childcare.
For everybody.
There you go, childcare.
There's always more hands.
Okay, citizens input.
I'm not a citizen.
Well, do you have county attorney, assistant county attorney input?
Dan, you're left to represent all the cities.
Well, you might want to look up Senate File four fifty-five, which was passed by the Iowa Senate on the fifteenth. Now, I, I think I did this all right, but I'm just looking at my phone.
Four fifty-five.
And recommended for passage by a House Subcommittee. A county shall not adopt or enforce an ordinance, motion, resolution or amendment relating to the preservation, compaction, placement or depth of top oil at a construction site that is more restrictive than those requirements provided in the National Pollution Strategy Elimination System General Act Number Two as issued by the Department of Natural Resources. I think they're already heading on this.
Sounds like they've beat us to the punch.
What was that?
Sounds like you might be right.
Well, it hasn't been passed, my understanding, just looking at my phone, my assistant.
They should just run these counties for us.
Recommending.
So we can stop getting together.
Yeah. Save us some money.
Are taking care of us a hundred percent.
Did they say anything about bonding in there?
Don't talk about it, because.
Yeah, don't talk about it. No, it looks like the latest thing is.
Thanks, Dan.
As of yesterday, Subcommittee recommends passage, so.
And, and you said it passed which state?
It passed the Senate on the fifteenth.
Okay, I'll.
Well, what was the number again?
I filed four fifty-five. So I think I have it right.
Yeah, they passed four seventy-one.
Do we have any other? I guess we don't. Anybody on the internet? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Get that, all in favor of states, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All at the same time?
Looks like I got stuff in here that needs to be cast on, it almost went in my.
Look at you.
I'm sorry.